Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Fairfax City Council on Tuesday, July 9th. I have one bit of housekeeping to clear up as we come into session. I'd like to move that 7:03 PM, the City Council concluded its closed meeting to conduct interviews for boards and commissions. I move that each of us certify that to the best of each council member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only public business matters identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. All council members in favor of the certification motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, I would like to ask Councilmember Schmidt to lead us in an invocation, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. As the heavens and earth are guided by laws and seasons, may your spirit guide us to fulfill the laws of our city and seasons of need in our community. May we meet the challenges of our city and citizens with the wisdom to ensure that all are fairly served. May we listen attentively to those who speak to us with their -- with needs. May we listen openly to those with whom we disagree, and may we listen fully to those who bring us knowledge which will help us make the difficult decisions we face. May we always govern as we would be governed in the spirit of justice, peace, fairness, and inclusivity. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I'd like to ask representatives from our Parks and Recreation Department to join me, please, for confirmation. Come on in, ladies and gentlemen. Jennifer, would you like -- members of the board, please join us as well? That's great. Thank you for coming. Okay. Whereas -- by the way, I should apologize for not wearing a tie. The truth be told is Mr. Greenfield will probably get me in trouble for this, mention it. My neck was a little tight here to button it, so I think that's a little lessening there. I'll hear from Mayor John Mason about this later, I'm sure. Whereas, the Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the city of Fairfax. And whereas, our Parks and Recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region. And whereas, the Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreational services for those who are mentally or physically challenged, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas, the Parks and Recreation programs aid in the increase of our community's economic prosperity through increased property values, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, the Parks and recreational -- recreation areas improve water quality, help protect groundwater, help prevent flooding, improve quality of the air we breathe, produce habitat for wildlife, and provide vegetative buffers to development. And whereas, our Parks and Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now, therefore, aye. Scott Silverthorne, Mayor of the city of Fairfax, in concert with the City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2013 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fairfax, and remind all of our city residents to get outside and enjoy the many parks and sign up for one of the many recreational programs provided here in the city. Thank you all very much. Michael, would you like to say a few words? And why don't you also just give us a little update, if you would, on what a great day we had on the Fourth of July?
That'd be great.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
On behalf of everybody in the Parks and Recreation Department and members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, thank you very much. We had a wonderful event. July always kicks off with Independence Day. We had record crowds for the parade and record crowds for our evening show. Probably one of the best fireworks shows that I've ever seen here in the city of Fairfax or in a lot of other places as well. And we're very proud of that. A lot of volunteer efforts go into that and making that a successful event, as well as a lot of staff, and a lot of support from this City Council, too. So we really greatly appreciate that. This year's National Recreation and Parks Association's theme for Parks and Recreation Month is "I Love My Park and Recreation." And with our -- our parks, our future, what we're doing for our strategic plan, it's very appropriate because over the last two months, we've done a lot of outreach for the strategic plan, and we've heard a lot of positive feedback to shape the future of our Parks and Recreation. So thank you very much. Stay involved with Parks and Recreation. Get out there and enjoy the 24 parks, 21 miles of trails, and all that we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I think all of us were amazed at what a great turnout we had on the fourth. To thank all of you who participated and those who are watching on TV. The one thing I'll mention is that today on Facebook, for those of you who saw it, there was a posting of a 1976 -- did you see this, Melanie? 1976 Fourth of July Parade in the city video. It was a good five-minute-long video. It was fascinating. One of the things I noticed right away is what a great turnout we have today by comparison to yesteryear. I mean, it was crowded then, but you could really see a difference in terms of the -- and also the haircuts, that's true. So thank you all very much. Let's do a quick photo op. Everybody? Join? The newest member?
Thank you. Thank you.
You're pretty spic, though, right? Okay. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number -- Agenda Item Number Four, which is -- I'm sorry, Agenda Item Number Five, which is Adoption of the Agenda.
So moved.
Actually, I'm sorry. This is -- the agenda's a little out of the -- I'm sorry, number four should have been number three. So let me go back to number four before we move the Adoption of the Agenda, which is Presentations by the Public on Any Item That Is Not Subject to a Public Hearing Tonight. Is there anyone who has -- is there anyone who's previously signed up under this, Melanie? No. So with that, I will open it up for general comments. Anybody who'd like to address the council under this Agenda Item, any item that does not call for a public hearing tonight? Okay. Hearing none. Then we'll move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Adoption of the Agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Greenfield, seconded by Mr. Meyer, to adopt the Agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Six, Consent Agenda. Mr. Greenfield.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move adoption of the Consent Agenda for Agenda Item Number Six-A, Introduction of an Appropriation Resolution in the amount of $130,000 to fund trail design and construction from Parkway to the rear of Fairfax Boulevard Marketplace. Agenda Item Number Six-B, Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 66, Article 1, Section 66-13A of the Code of the City of Fairfax, Virginia pertaining to holidays and leave for city employees. And Agenda Item Number Six-C, Consideration of an Award Contract with Fort Meyer Construction Corporation in an Amount of $123,700 for the purchase and installation of seven additional traffic video cameras to augment the city's existing system. And for Agenda Items Number Six-A and B, I moved away this first reading and set the public hearing for July 23rd, 2013. And for Agenda Item Number Six-C, I move to approve the suggested motion in the staff report.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Greenfield, seconded by Mr. Meyer, to adopt the Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to abstain or object to any of these items being handled tonight on consent? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now move into our single public hearing tonight, which is a public hearing and council action on proposed amendments to the Code of the City of Fairfax, Chapter 110, to establish and amend zoning regulations pertaining to clinics, medical care facilities, medical offices, offices, and hospitals. Has this been properly advertised?
Yes.
By look at the turnout, I think you're right. And with that, I will ask for a staff report, please. Ms. Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor Silverthorne, and good evening to the members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to share this -- to have this opportunity to share information with you regarding the treatment of medical uses in the zoning ordinance and how our relevant regulations could be made more transparent, more flexible, and therefore become more user-friendly for those interested in establishing these uses in the city. I'd like to begin the presentation just by reviewing the office definition, which includes two types of medical uses. And as you can see on the overhead projection screen, you'll find that clinics and physician and dentist's offices are included in the definition of office. Now, the definition of office is a very broad category of use. It includes more generic-type offices such as insurance or real estate broker or agent offices, architects, accountants, and other professionals who would offer consultative services. And the inclusion of physicians and dentist's office actually falls in line with those types of uses. Of concern is the inclusion of the clinic. A clinic is not expected to behave similarly to a physician's office or a dentist's office. A clinic is typically supported by other services such as a pharmacy or even a laboratory, and those are not the type of uses you would expect to find in a doctor or a dentist or physician's office. So there's some of a mismatch in including the clinic -- clinic type of use in the category of offices, and that causes some confusion, certainly for folks who are interested in establishing that particular type of medical use. Another area of concern for staff is that the parking provisions are equally confusing. As you can see and as presented in your staff report, hospitals, nursing homes, convalescent homes, emergency medical clinics, and other similar facilities are all grouped together and have the same parking requirements. And I -- that's just all laid out in your staff reports, I won't go through all the numbers necessarily, but -- and what's perplexing about this is that certainly a nursing home and a convalescent home is typically more of a residential care situation, and the residents in those facilities are folks who really aren't able to care for themselves and require assistance on a fairly 24-hour basis. A hospital, however, is for use by those who are ambulatory as well as non-ambulatory. You could go into a hospital for a short stay. You might be in a hospital for a longer stay. However, it's unlikely anyone would actually reside there. And yet, the parking requirement for both of these types of uses or all three of these uses is based on number of beds as well as employees, among other things stipulated in the staff report. A little bit out of sync with that is the emergency medical clinic, where you wouldn't expect anyone to really stay overnight. You would expect that facility perhaps to offer 24-hour availability, but that those using that facility would come and go. So the idea that there would be some similarity in the parking demand for these types of uses is a little perplexing and confusing, and staff believes that that could be resolved under the proposed text amendment. And then also, under the parking requirements, we have a separate ratio of requirement for medical, dental offices, and clinics, and those are, once again, grouped together as if they would behave similarly with respect to the demand for parking. And staff believes that this is just not a clear path for users who come to the city looking to establish these types of uses. It's just not clear exactly what the requirement would be and how the city would view these uses. So staff proposes to correct these two -- these two areas of the code, which are a fairly limited proposal for correction, and that is to create a new definition called medical care facilities that would include hospitals, urgent care facilities, surgical centers, clinics, and other similar uses. What's most important to note here, as you'll see on the overhead screen, is that physicians' offices and dentist's offices would remain in the category of office use. So you could still operate a dentist's or physician's office from an office building. And again, the idea is that this is a professional consultation based on medical concerns, much as one would go to an architect's office for professional services and so forth, and you don't see a lot of the ancillary support services in these types of offices, in these types of medical offices. And the next change would be to modify the code such that medical care facilities would be required to obtain a special use permit through the City Council's approval and review and approval process. And the purpose of this is to build in some opportunity to evaluate how intense a particular use may be and its potential to impact both the surrounding properties, to impact the traffic on the adjacent streets, and in essence, to take a use that we might want to give some closer scrutiny to through this discretionary process. And finally, the staff recommends changing the minimum parking requirements for this new type of use, this new medical care facility. And the new requirement is to establish a minimum of one parking space for every 200 square feet that everybody would have to meet who falls under this particular new category of medical use. However, there's also an opportunity to take into consideration that not -- that the one parking requirement perhaps isn't appropriate for all uses. Some uses might require more parking than the minimum, some would only require the minimum. So there is the opportunity for each use to offer additional information that would be particular to their operations as justification for parking requirement. So, really, in conclusion, the new category of use is, staff believes, clear -- clearly and logically defined. The code then becomes better organized with respect to medical uses, and the requirements for parking have some flexibility, again, to address the particular needs of an establishment. And overall, this improves the oversight for these types of uses that would have similar characteristics. And so that's staff's report. I do want to add that this was presented to the planning commission, and they have forwarded a recommendation for adoption of these text amendments, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Coleman. Questions of staff. Mr. Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
First is, the current language that we have now, how long has that been in existence? How many years?
Oh, I believe since the inception of our code. It's never been tinkered with, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, so it's been around a few years, so.
The last major overhaul was in 1980s, and prior to that, of course, our code has just been modified in minor ways prior to that.
Okay. And what other jurisdictions have similar requirements that staff is recommending?
Well, we did check with the city of Falls Church and found that their provisions are very similar to ours as they are currently written. So they've not updated their provisions specific to this type of use recently. We've looked at Arlington and found that they tend to look for the special use permit process for hospitals. They allow pretty much the physicians and dentist's office by right. And if one is attempting -- and that's pretty much in a new construction situation. If you're looking for a conversion of an existing office building, then they're going through the site plan process. And for them, as I understand it, the site plan process is actually subject to the board -- their board approval. So it is a public hearing setting, similar to a use permit, probably.
And as -- excuse me, Mr. Mayor. And as recommended, what jurisdictions are similar?
I think we're probably looking at -- we did a survey, if you will, of, as the staff report indicates, of Loudon as well as Fairfax and the city of Alexandria. And I think we kind of culled from those jurisdictions those provisions that we thought fit the city of Fairfax best. So we didn't really adopt anyone else's straight from the code. We just sort of modified what we thought was tailored for our jurisdiction.
So in your opinion, it's fair to say that the recommendation from staff is consistent with what Loudon, Fairfax County, and the city of Alexandria already provide for?
I think so, yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Drummond. Other questions? Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm interested in a little bit more information on how we would -- if this did go forward, how we would determine the parking requirements for this type of use.
It would be based on the applicant's -- the applicant's burden of responsibility is to demonstrate through either a parking study. They could have parking professionals prepare something to show that their demand for parking is in line with what's common for their type of facility. So they would have to present that type of information, including the factors that are indicated in the staff reports, such as the patient load, the number of beds, if that's appropriate, hours of operation, the extent of the services. So we really are looking for the applicant to demonstrate why we should accept their proposal for a parking requirement. But it's subject to, of course, the special use permit process. So it isn't as if they're gonna propose this as a by-right parking requirement. This would just be part of their special use permit application package. So they would present that to the City Council for ultimate decision.
But typically, we have a formula, depending on the use, that kind of guides us on how many parking spaces are appropriate.
There are other provisions of the code that allow for the zoning administrator to weigh in and evaluate, for instance, in high schools, where we take into account the athletic facilities as well as the auditoriums, the gymnasium, the student-teacher ratio, square footage, and we take all those factors into account. But once again, there's a minimum requirement that there -- and I don't know right off hand, I just don't recall, that a school has to provide a minimum number of parking spaces. But then above and beyond that, they may need to provide more based on their facility. So this is not something that we don't do in other -- for other uses.
Are there other uses, other than schools, that we have a similar criteria for?
I'd have to think about that. I can look it up in the code. My code's on the floor, so I can look it up for you.
Well, how about your comparison with the other jurisdictions? Did they have a setup similar to this where the zoning administrator would kind of evaluate the parking, or did -- were there more set formulas? I believe there was some flexibility in their regulations as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Other questions of staff? Mr. DeMarco.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The physician and dental office component, by separating that out or including it in a standard office definition, are we changing the parking requirements associated with that, or staying at the five per 1,000 square feet?
It's staying as it is currently listed as -- actually, it has its own parking requirement. I believe it's one to 200.
Okay. And if we were to want to look at that at some point in time, we would do that as part of the relook at the entire zoning ordinance, I would think.
Yes.
Okay. Because some feedback I have received from some people in the development community, it's a little high compared to other jurisdictions for those specific uses, office uses. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. DeMarco, that is certainly something I think all of us are anxious to look into from an economic development perspective as well. Other questions of staff? Okay, Ms. Coleman, we may reserve the right to come back to you with further questions as the night goes on and be prepared.
Sure.
I assume we're gonna have a few questions from the audience as well, and I may need you to come back and answer the technical aspects of. With that, I am going to open the public hearing. And we do have a number of individuals who have signed up, and I just want to let people know that we are going to limit our time this evening to three minutes per speaker. And we are also -- I just -- I see a placard in the audience. We have a standing policy of no placards or props at City Council meetings inside Council chambers. I just want to make sure that's well-established. We've been over this the last couple of weeks on numerous occasions. So with that, I'd like to recognize and call up Sarah Polton, please. Welcome, Ms. Polton. If you start out with your name and address for the record.
Hello, thank you. I'm Sarah Polton, and my address is 11800 Sunset Hills, Reston, Virginia, 2019. But I did grow up very close to here. Thank you. So thank you, guys, for having me -- help me speak. Sorry, I'm a little -- okay. I disagree with the staff's recommendation of the approval of this amendment. I didn't find the definition to be clear or succinct, and I felt as if you guys had many questions that I also had. And if it had been clear and succinct, there wouldn't have been the need to ask very many questions. It would've been pretty obvious. I found -- I found that the way the amendment was displayed to be very duplicitous. I felt that the definition not including dentist's office and specifically -- specifically the way they use clinics, I felt as if we were discussing women's health facilities. And that's very concerning to me. As a woman, I care about women's health, and as I think a lot of men in this room do as well. And I would hate to see -- I would hate to see an amendment use -- I would hate to see an amendment use complicated language to impair women from getting the treatment and health that they need. And I was also curious about the study that we were going to use for parking and what that would cost. And I think that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next we have signed up -- make sure I get this right. Is it Emily Patton?
Yes. Like a gentleman.
Welcome.
Great. Hello? Okay, great. Hi, my name is Emily Patton, and I'm here to voice my opposition to this ordinance. I am very much pro-choice, but I'm here also to talk about equality and fairness. So right now, basically, you guys are considering whether or not to classify clinics as a type of medical care facility instead of a medical office. The problem, as I see it, is that where are you drawing the line? Women's health centers offer a variety of services, from shots to mammograms to cancer screenings, as well as abortion services. So my question is, why are dentist's office, offices, and even eye care facilities that offer things like plastic surgery allowed to fall under the category of an office, but somehow something that offers women's health care now becomes a clinic? And this ordinance would bar most women from finding facilities near them? In addition, who are the people who get to arbitrarily decide, yea or nay, when a clinic submits an application? So who are the people? The requirements that are laid out in this ordinance are very subjective, and they're not clear, especially the formula for parking, which was vague, and no one here seems to be able to answer what is the correct formula for that. I just think that any changes that are made to this code need to be 100% clear and concise and need to be applied consistently across the board. It's not fair that doctors' offices and dentist's offices get to stay as offices, but somehow women's health clinics are not different. So abortion, obviously, is a controversial issue. I think most of us can agree on that. But the zoning law doesn't get to change just because of a political ideology or someone's whim. The proposed ordinance will make the code more subjective and innately less fair for a whole bunch of people. And, you know, I would really urge for all of you to please vote no to the changes unless somehow these changes can be made 100% clear and 100% fair across the board for all of these facilities. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Patton, I don't want to get into a dialogue here, but let me just answer one quick question. You asked who would be the deciders.
Yeah.
The council.
Yes.
This responsibility would now fall instead of a staff making administrative decisions. The council would then be responsible for making--
And are there clear rules set out saying that if it falls under this categorization, it 100% is denied, or is it just on the whim of a person?
The council --
Or the council.
The council has criteria under SUP process, like we do for all other SUP processes that are followed and have to be looked at, and then the council will make a decision based on that criteria. It is set out very clearly in state code and in city code. So -- but yes, it is a matter of interpretation of that criteria, no question about it. But you had mentioned -- you had-- Ms. Patton, I don't want to get into a dialogue here, but let me just answer one quick question. You asked who would be the deciders?
Yeah.
The council, this responsibility would now fall, instead of a staff making administrative decisions, the council would then be responsible for making--
And are there clear rules set out saying that if it falls under this categorization, it 100% is denied, or is it just on the whim of a person?
The council--
Or the council?
The council has criteria under SUP process, like we do for all other SUP processes that are followed and have to be looked at, and then when the council will make a decision based on that criteria. It is set out very clearly in state code and in city code. So, but yes, it is, it is a matter of interpretation of that criteria, no question about it. But you had mentioned, you had mentioned who make, who makes these decisions. I don't want you to think that this is gonna fall, fall elsewhere. It, this body would make that decision. And again, I don't want to get into a dialogue. I was just trying to answer your question. If we have more time later, we'll answer the questions. Ma'am, we'll, we'll get to you in a moment. Sorry, this is not a debate. Thank you very much. Thank you for speaking.
Okay, well, thank you for answering my question.
Thank you. Next we have Shelby Duffer. Did I get that right? Welcome. If you start out with your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. First, I want to thank the city council for having the public hearing tonight and giving us the opportunity to speak. My name is Shelby Duffer. I am at 6503 Insignia Court in Centerville, Virginia. So outside of the city, but I do work and have lived for over a decade in the local area, so these issues are important to me. Although I think my comments will obviously reveal the fact that I am pro-choice and advocate for women's health care. I think the ordinance in front of us today needs to be evaluated from the standpoint of looking at applying the bare minimum of regulation and, and ordinance that is required to regulate these clinics. I think making the law more complex, or adding, finagling it in, in the ways that maybe have been proposed are going to potentially add a burden of cost and red tape to medical facilities or clinics that want to move or relocate within the city. I actually have the major concern of the definition of what's a clinic versus an office. I think in the current definition of clinic, the women's health care clinics have been lumped into that category. I oppose this decision. I think that a women's health care clinic is offering, the vast, the vast majority of the services they're offering are routine screenings, regular GYN exams, cancer screenings, mammograms, vaccinations, public health for a segment of Fairfax city's population that is otherwise underserved and doesn't have access to these services. They see patients on a schedule. They have a limited number of doctors. And so the concerns about parking or overflow, or too many patients coming in at one time, or increasing traffic in an area, I think, aren't appropriate for this type of facility. I think if you have an OB/GYN medical office that has 10 providers, I think the, the traffic and impact of that office is actually much more substantial than you would see a women's health clinic with maybe two part-time providers that are seeing patients on a scheduled daily basis. So I believe that a women's health care clinic needs to retain its current classification as an office, as this zoning regulation implies with doctor's offices, dentist's office, and other facilities. I believe the definition of clinic also has something to do with providing ancillary services, like laboratories and medications. I think doctor's offices also do this. They provide procedures, they do many in-office procedures that require invasiveness and bleeding and management of critical care. And anybody at a women's health clinic that needs these services would be transported by ambulance to an appropriate hospital, where then they would have that type of overnight stay. So I guess my time is up. I just want to say again that I urge the, the committee to vote no to this ordinance change.
Thank you, Ms. Duffer. Next we have signed up, I hope I'm getting this right, is it Arnessa Wilson? And I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing any names here, so you can correct me. Welcome.
Thank you, members of the council, for your time today. My name is Erin Assawellson. My address is 2303--
Closer to you.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
My address is 2303 Beachwood Terrace in Ashburn, Virginia. And I'm simply here today to oppose the ordinance change. Simply put, I don't feel that it was very concise. It seems like there is a lot of issues with the ordinance change that is open to interpretation. And I trust that, like all important decisions, the council uses their best judgment. But I feel that this issue really is going to cause problems for a number of providers that offer services. Health clinics offer diagnostic care, so do dentist's office. Health clinics offer abortion and other surgical services, and dentist's office offer oral surgery. So I really don't see, or it seems to be cutting, splitting hairs. I understand that you are making the final decision, but I feel that this issue can really be determined by ideology. And I believe that if we're going to make zoning changes, that they need to be applied consistently. They need to be applied 100% across the board. And I just would, like, you know, I'm opposing this ordinance change, and I hope that you will seriously consider opposing it as well. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Next we have signed up, I, I know this name, Lisa Wetzel. Welcome, Ms. Wetzel.
Hi, everybody. My name's Lisa Wetzel, and I'm Fairfax city resident, mother of three. And I've known many of you for years. I appreciate the time to be able to speak to you about this issue. I'd also like to take just a quick opportunity to, I mean, request to have everybody up in the room and behind me to stand up if they are opposed to this ordinance. Yeah, there you go. So I am deeply troubled by the proposed ordinance before you. I firmly believe that if passed, this measure will make it disproportionately difficult for women's health care centers to operate and provide care within our city borders. Currently, abortion providers in the city of Fairfax are zoned as any other medical office building, including dentist's and doctor's offices. However, this ordinance places women's health centers, which offer a wide variety of care, including abortion, a safe outpatient procedure, into the same category as hospitals and surgical centers. Making this change and requiring women's health clinics to obtain a special use permit, you will be forcing a prospective center to undergo an expensive and drawn-out process while giving the city arbitrary decision-making power. I am particularly troubled by the fact that, under the proposed change, the zoning administrator has the power to decide ex, well, I guess you now have cleared up that, that it is gonna be the council that's gonna be, but still, council changes. And, you know, we would like to have a more firm formula. So anyway, to go on. The zoning laws, more so than other aspects of the code, require consistent and fair application, and is alarming that you would seek to make this process more subjective, and in doing so, disproportionately impact the ability of a safe and legal and beneficial women's health center to operate within our, our boundaries. Women's reproductive health is a critical part of comprehensive health care, and it must and should be treated as such, and not left to arbitrary interpretation of subjective law. And, and, you know, I would really ask what you all think is the real intention of this ordinance being proposed now. I mean, we've had a sort of legislative, legislative hostile environment, and I think it's generated, you know, activism in Fairfax city, and I hate to see that happen. So I would ask that you all oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. That is all. We have previously signed up to address the city council under this agenda item. Are there others who would like to address the council? Let me start with the first woman right there. Yes, ma'am, you first. You were the quickest with your hand, so. Come on down.
I'm gonna need a clinic my way out.
And some of you that also raised your hands, if you might want to queue up here on the side, just to make it easier. Thank you. Please start out with your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Helene Weissman. I am a city resident, 3718 Randolph Street. I've lived here for, I guess, nine years, maybe going on 10. And I'm gonna be blunt because that's what I do best. My business partner says, there you go again, being too rational. Everybody else has talked about all the stuff, you know, that these clinics provide, aside from abortion, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, just last month, trap laws were passed by the Commonwealth of Virginia, targeted regulation of abortion providers. And this really feels like Fairfax city's own little way of passing a trap law against its residents. And there's, while there's a lot of wealthy residents of the city of Fairfax, there's a lot of also not-so-wealthy residents of the city of Fairfax. And these clinics provide, other than abortions, for these people. And I feel like we're being told, oh, we're gonna make things less confusing, and trying to pass this off as, as making things less confusing, when we really ought to call it what it is, which is a way of trying to stop these clinics from providing abortions. And that's not all that they do. But as somebody who's pro-choice, I think that it's okay that they do that. But it's okay if people don't, you know, if you don't want to have an abortion, don't have one. But don't stop any, but don't stop other people from having one if that's what they need, and don't stop the, the less wealthy people who can't afford to go to the doctor's offices that are going to still have, you know, their way of parking, from going to clinics and getting the shots and the health care that they need, just because we're opposed to perhaps, you know, talking about abortion. I know that's a big hot ticket, but here we are in 2013, and I feel like we're going back to the 1970s right now in Virginia. And I hope that the city of Fairfax will oppose this and not do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your bluntness. Ladies and gentlemen, please, if we could refrain from doing that, that's just gonna, gonna drag out the presentations tonight. So with that, yes, sir, you're next. Please join us.
Hi, my name is Noah Mamber. I'm the Publican Legislative Affairs Manager for Planned Parenthood Metropolitan Washington, and an attorney. PPMW has been a trusted healthcare provider for 75 years, and we serve over 6,000 Virginia women and men each year in Falls Church with life-saving cancer screenings, birth control, and basic preventative care. I'm here to oppose the amendments to the code of the city of Fairfax. While I absolutely appreciate how important good zoning is when trying to run a city and trying to plan its land use policy, and I'm sure that the planning commission was not trying to draft an ordinance that would discriminate against abortion providers. Unfortunately, that is sadly the effect that this ordinance would have. Women's health centers, which provide an invaluable service to the community, are already overly regulated as a result of the passage of the statewide trap law. The proponents of that law claimed that it was about protecting women's health, but if the process went on, it became clear to anybody watching that it was about shutting down health centers that provide abortion with medically unnecessary, arbitrary construction requirements that did not relate to the services these centers were providing. As a result, many health centers will have to relocate from their current buildings because they are simply physically unable to make the necessary facility changes. The draft ordinance before you today would add yet another onerous, medically unnecessary restriction to be applied to abortion providing facilities, and not to doctors' and dentist's offices. Thus, trap will force abortion providers to move, and then local ordinances such as these will effectively ban them from their towns, meaning these providers will be stuck and have to close, and a Virginia woman needing to terminate a pregnancy will have nowhere to go. The July 2nd zoning administrator's memo said that the goal of this amendment, and of zoning generally, is to create clarity and predictability for potential users of land in Fairfax. The thing is, this amendment's new standard for parking spaces is neither predictable nor clear. While the current doctor's office standard of one space per 200 square feet of Gloucester area provides a clear, measurable standard where users can predict the zoning administrator's decision, the proposed test cannot even be called a standard, and would really be an arbitrary decision left up to one person, the zoning administrator, or possibly the, the council, I wasn't sure on that. The language says that the decision will be made based on the number of beds, patients, employees, staff members, contractors, visitors, volunteers, size of facility, and other factors determined by the zoning administrator. I'm a lawyer, having studied many poorly-written laws, have also drafted legislation myself. Leaving what should be a clear and predictable decision on parking based on a provable objective metric in the hands of one individual who can consider other factors is a sure recipe for arbitrary and discriminatory zoning, and possible abuse if there should ever be a zoning administrator with an anti-women's health political agenda. The other ostensible reason listed in the memo for these amendments would be the potential impacts from land use by an abortion provider for increased parking requirements, but there's no evidence in the memo that the presence of an abortion provider in Fairfax would necessitate additional parking or frequent emergency vehicle visits. The memo also notes that Alexandria and other surrounding jurisdictions have this special use permit process, which will be another obstacle for an abortion provider to overcome. Could require at least a $48 to $100 fee, could take up to six months, and I've heard are very difficult to get, which could be a fatal blow. However, the memo's implication that these special use classifications are the same as the one proposed today is not true. I'm almost done. The Alexandria and Loudoun County special use category actually does not include abortion providers as medical facilities. They remain doctor's offices. So the council should not look to them for basis. A jurisdiction that cares about women's health should please not pass a law that makes it harder to, to access abortion. Please do not insert politics into women's health, and single out abortion providers for unnecessary zoning regulation, and please oppose the passage of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time's expired. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, thank, thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. My name is Alani Ermaski. I represent NARAL Pro-Choice Virginia, which has about 500 members within the boundaries of Fairfax city. I, as others before you have been, I'm deeply troubled by the proposed ordinance. I firmly believe, as does NARAL Pro-Choice Virginia, that this measure will make it disproportionately difficult for women's health centers to operate and provide care within the city's borders. I just have a few questions for you. I think a lot has been said, and I don't want to repeat anything, and I'm hoping that you all can either answer my questions. I don't know if we can make this a dialogue, or if you'd like to--
No, ma'am, we cannot.
Okay. Maybe after I speak, if you all would like to address these questions, I would like answers. My first question is to address the assertion that similar jurisdictions classify doctor's offices in this way. I called both Alexandria and, city of Alexandria and Loudoun County, and asked specifically if abortion providers would require a special use permit, and they both said no. So I'm not sure if that question was asked of them, or if more clarification is needed, but that's what I was told, and I think that that's very troubling if, you know, we are doing something that's changing from other jurisdictions, and yet you all think that it's, you know, consistent. So just wanted to point that out for you. The other question I have is, what has been asked, you know, rhetorically, but I'd like to ask it, you know, for real, where do you draw the line? What, what makes an abortion provider different, in an objective measure way, from a dentist's office that provides oral surgery? Is that dentist's office that provides oral surgery subject to a special use permit? Is it not subject? What about plastic surgery and LASIK eye surgery? Where, where exactly do you draw the line? Can one provider be operating? Can you have one surgeon? Can you have two? Is there any sort of objective, objective metrics that we're missing? Because I didn't find that in the report, and if it's just gonna be based on a case-by-case basis, that's troubling to us as an abortion rights advocacy group, because we have seen in Virginia, and multiple times, abortion providers being singled out unfairly, and we want to make sure that doesn't happen here. So all we're asking for is an objective, clear, concise application of zoning laws, and we just want to make sure that everything is clear and predictable. So any insight that you all can provide to me on that would be really helpful. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, everybody. I'm Kami St. Tremaine, proud resident of the city of Fairfax. I live at 4108 Addison Road. This issue was brought to my attention today. I'm fortunate I was able to be home for a while today, and I'm a big fan of doing some research. So I wanted to watch the planning commission presentation last night, excellent presentation made, the same one as you all saw today. As you know, the planning commission did recommend unanimously on this issue, but beforehand, there were several questions that were asked that I actually do not feel were properly addressed, and concerns that the planning commission had. And I hope that you will review their comments that they made. At least three members of the commission expressed concerns about the potential for the increase in special use permits that would now be required for businesses that fall under this more inclusive medical care facilities category. As you know, special use permits cost applying businesses substantial funds and time, making it harder for them to open within the city of Fairfax, or to move from a current location which they occupy in the city of Fairfax. Members also expressed concern, expressed a question, whether this change should be made when the zoning ordinances are about to undergo a complete and thorough review. Because this process will take several months, staff recommended that the change should go ahead, but I'm not sure that this question was answered adequately, since it is not guaranteed that text amendments to this ordinance would stand after these zoning laws were reviewed. One member specifically mentioned twice that we need a bright line in this kind of ordinance, to be clear, not nebulous on these issues. And I think, as you can hear from many of the comments tonight, we certainly do have very many nebulous issues being addressed here. I then wondered if these changes were being addressed simply because staff does need more clear guidance, or perhaps if they were being directed by some political motivation. So I decided to do a quick Google search. My Google search was "city of Fairfax abortion providers." The second hit was a Roman Catholic parish outside of the city of Fairfax illustrating a number of talking points. And I'm going to quote from this website. "While neither the mayor nor the city council-- "While neither the mayor nor the city council can outlaw abortion in the city of Fairfax because it is a legal activity in our nation, they do have the capacity to place restrictions on a business trying to open in the community if they feel it will be a detriment to the community. They can exercise their zoning authority as they would for any facility inappropriate for a quiet neighborhood bordering an historic area." I would like to point out that I live in a quiet city neighborhood bordering an historic area, and I personally have no objection to a women's healthcare facility that provides legal services operating near my home. In other words, I feel that these zoning ordinances are unnecessary, and these text amendments do provide clear challenges to a facility offering legal services. I thank you for your time, and again, I recommend the city council either denies the text amendment or at least postpones the decision until further review can be made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have, yes, ma'am?
My name is Harriet Campbell. I'm a former resident of Fairfax, currently residing in Alexandria. After that last presentation, I don't know that I have much to add, but it dovetails nicely with what I was intending to say. My concern is not over the specifics of this piece of ordinance, it is its very existence. My concern is that the legislative process is being used for a political end that aims to circumvent existing law as it relates to women's healthcare, and that is my deepest concern, that the legislative process is being used in ways to, to bring about a situation in the area that was not, that does not comply with current law. I understand the difficulties of dealing with abortion as an issue directly, since it is the law of the land, however, it is very emotionally felt by many people to have another side. My, my thought on this is simply that I understand the concerns of those who have an emotional tie to the belief that abortion is not an acceptable part of this society. However, in the case where reasonable people can disagree, it is the state's position under the separation of church and state to take the least restrictive position possible, and it is the law of the land at the moment. So I ask, please, that you not use the legislative process to circumvent existing law as it affects women's rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That is, again, all we have previously signed up. Is there, are there others who would like to address the city council under this agenda Anyone else? Yes, sir, and then, ma'am, you can follow.
Hi, my name is John Judy. I'm a resident of Fairfax County. I only learned of this item before you guys about two hours ago, and I'm here because I am pro-choice, and I am the father of a daughter, I am the husband of a woman of reproductive age, I have a sister of reproductive age, I have innumerable friends of reproductive age, so I have skin in the game. I have to preface this by saying that I am amazed that this is even being brought up in this area. This is northern Virginia, this is Fairfax, it's not Texas, it's not North Carolina. It's blue, and I'm really glad to be living here because of that. And I don't know how many of you have your minds already made up on this issue, but if I can appeal to anyone who might, for whatever reason, be on the fence, I would encourage you, if you've not already done so, to look into places where access to safe, legal abortion doesn't exist, and ask yourself if you would want to live, if you would want your daughters, your mothers, your sisters to live in a place like that. They're not great places. They're, they're tough to live in, and the health of women is lousy. I don't have any prepared remarks, I just want to share with you how strongly I feel about this. I understand that there are people who feel equally strongly on the other side, and I'm not going to force them at any point to undergo an abortion. I don't want that to be the law of the land either. I just want people to mind their own business, dare I say, be conservative about that kind of thing. The reason I feel strongly about this is that my own life history has been touched by it. My mother probably would not have had me if Roe v. Wade had been passed 20 years ago. She had to take a good friend of hers to get an illegal abortion before I was born. It scared her, and she ended up marrying my dad, perhaps at a younger age than she should have. They stayed together long enough to produce me, and in the course of my life, even though I suppose I should have appreciated the fact that illegal abortion, one way or another, led to my being alive, I ended up working for an organization called the National Organization for Women briefly, and I saw on the walls of their headquarters a poster that has stayed with me ever since. It was from the era pre-Roe v. Wade where safe, legal abortion was not available. It was a crime scene photo of the aftermath of a, an illegal abortion. It was a woman lying in an alleyway on top of some garbage bags. She was naked, her back was towards us, and because it was a black-and-white photo, her buttocks appeared to be covered with chocolate syrup. I figured out it was blood. I don't know how any of you stand on this, I would hope that you agree with me and my stance. If you're on the fence, I would just ask you to imagine, maybe that's my time up, just imagine the kind of world, the kind of country we'd be living in if we did not have safe, legal abortion. I'd just sleep on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Sarah Wise. I'm a former Fairfax resident. I'm a current George Mason student, so I've been here for about four years, grew up in the area. I'm not affiliated with anyone, not affiliated with anything, no organization. I have one volunteer group that I'm part of, and it's not even associated with this. I'm not here for anyone. I'm a voter, and I'm the person that this law is going to affect. My friends can't be here because they're working, or they don't have cars, or they have a lot of things, there are a lot of reasons that they can't be here to talk about this, but I want you to know the degree to which this would affect me, and this would affect the lives of my peers. A lot of people don't have access to women's healthcare outside of this context, and it's so important, it's so important to us and to our health. I just want to impress upon you the degree to which this would impact my life in a very personal way, and just, I don't know, put a face to it, and, and to also speak for all of my classmates and peers and everyone who can't be here right now, but who I know, I mean, not all of them, but a lot of them agree with me, and just to sort of say how important this is, and to please urge you to vote against this because of how much it will mean to those who can't always be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, that concludes those who have previously asked to speak to the council. Are there others who would like to address the council under this agenda item? Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, I've also just learned this this afternoon, and so I have been trying to put together a very cohesive statement and failing, so I might stumble through this. I've been living in Fairfax County since I was 10 years old, I'm now almost 40, and I've lived all around, hopped around the area, so I'm not currently a Fairfax, city of Fairfax resident, I have been, would be again, in a heartbeat, given the opportunity. That said, my biggest concern is, again, this is a zoning regulation, so few people are here because so few people pay attention to zoning. It seems fairly clear that there is a political agenda behind this at somebody's level, not necessarily anybody sitting in this room, but the concern being that it's being used, much like trap regulation, to shut down clinics that restrict access to care for women who are of childbearing age and others. And we all know that there's a comprehensive spectrum of care provided by these clinics, it's, it's from, including, including birth care, including care for women who would be actually carrying to term, for those of you who care about that. And so it matters a great deal to have these clinics shut down. Also, I want to point out that these clinics are more readily available in areas like the city of Fairfax where people are proportionately more well-funded than they are in the poorer areas of this state. We expect the trap regulations are going to more rapidly close down access to care for women in remote areas who would then be burdened to come to someplace more urban, like the city of Fairfax, to attempt to gain access to care, including care for the, for caring to term, once again, as well as for termination and routine healthcare. If the city of Fairfax and other more affluent areas are being attacked by these similarly restrictive legislation that's sort of sliding under the table, sliding under the radar, where people who are normal citizens aren't paying attention, for example, with zoning, I think it's of extremely great concern, and I ask you to consider that not only will the residents of the city of Fairfax be impacted, but obviously the immediate Fairfax County area and any residents from the rest, the rest of Virginia who are being disproportionately and unfortunately impacted by the trap regulation that has been passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am? Got your hands full, I see.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Hume. I live in the city of Fairfax. My address is 10310 Beaumont Street. I'm here with my two kids, because I also only found out about it a couple hours ago, and had to come straight from stuff. I don't really have anything prepared either, but I do, did want to come as a city resident and as my opposition as well. I read the thing, and like many people here, that it really bothered me that there wasn't a clear definition of clinic. I had something removed from my hand last week at the dermatologist's office, got my bill already, it's billed as surgery. It was a doctor's, you know, regular doctor's office. But, and I've used women's health clinics before for birth control when I didn't have insurance when I was younger, for STD testing, you know, for all of the other things that they provide in addition to abortion services if they, if they do provide abortion services. And again, also, live in the neighborhood, just fine with it being in my neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I noticed your little one has caught himself on TV there, so that's, that got all the attention, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, again, that does conclude the list. Is there anyone else? I'm going to, I want to make sure I don't, I give everybody a chance here. Yes, ma'am, please join us.
Hi, my name is Dolores Trevino Gerber, and I live in Fairfax County, and I appreciate you allowing us to speak. I just found out about this also this afternoon, I apologize for coming in late. One thing that I wanted to say, because I, too many people bring this up as just an abortion issue, and it isn't, because these clinics provide a lot of services for women. And I'll tell you a little story, and, and this is why it's so important to me and to our family. When my father worked at a family-owned company, they had, the owner provided their insurance for the whole, for all the, all the people that he employed, it was probably about 12 people. Because the owner's wife got very ill, she had, I believe she had a heart attack, then one of the employees had some issues, and his wife had issues, very severe health issues. The insurance company decided just to cancel it, just canceled the entire company, health insurance. So that made it very difficult for anybody in their company to have health insurance. They had to buy their own. So for my mom and my dad, my dad was getting close to retirement age, we were able to get him health insurance. I have four sisters, we all pitched together, we got him insurance. Because my mother had glaucoma, she had high blood pressure, they would not provide her insurance. And I mean, they just would not, even if there wasn't just not an insurance company that would do it. So she had no insurance coverage, and it was difficult to get her any type of medical coverage, everything had to be paid upfront, and that's expensive. You know, and she just wanted to put off everything. You know, no, 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 I don't want to go, no, no, I don't want y'all to pay for that. And it just made it very difficult. What was very, very helpful was those clinics, the women's clinics, she could go there and get her testing done, and many times, they didn't charge her anything. So she had, at least we knew that that was being taken care of, and it was wonderful that they would do it at no charge. So that, that was something that we could rest assured that she was being taken care of on that issue. So when my dad finally, he, the owner of the company that he worked for for so long, he retired, he sold the business, so he had someone else take it over, and he got another job and got insurance which covered her finally. But during that period of time, if it hadn't been for that, for those clinics, my mother would not have had anything to take care of that. So I want you to see it from a different perspective, please. It's not just that one issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? It's you. And if there's others who'd like to speak, please queue up here, because I'm, we're getting ready to close the public hearing, and there seems to be a pause in participation. So if there's others who'd like to participate, please join us up here. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Janet Newhouse. I live in Fairfax, and I've lived here for many years, very happily. I looked for years for a house in Fairfax City before I moved here. Have been here almost 20 years. I live on Ranger Road, and I love the city. I found out about this only recently, had not intended to speak, but I wanted to make a couple remarks. I recently retired from the Fairfax County Health Department. I worked with the Health Department for almost 30 years, and before that I received a master's degree from Columbia University in public health. My area of specialty was family health and maternal-child health. I have been involved in teaching, healthcare, social work my entire career of many years. And there is just one thing I say about this proposal which stunned me. This is clearly political, it has nothing to do with women's health. The goal of this is not to protect health, the goal is to restrict access to healthcare. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, any, yes, ma'am?
Hi, thank you all for letting us speak. My name is Melanie Stickle. I moved to Fairfax about five months ago. I live at 12567 Summit Manor Drive in Fairfax, and expecting a child in October. I am single, unemployed, and I am pro-choice, and I think it's very important that you oppose this measure today, mostly because I'm looking to give birth to, if my child makes it to term, at, at a clinic that is not at a hospital, and I want to make sure that they don't have to get a special permit use. It's hard to find a lot of hospitals that have the right midwives and care that I wish to receive, and this is a women's health issue, so I hope you'll oppose this measure.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and before I turn to the council, let me turn back to staff. Mr. Lovekman, Ms. Coleman, Mr. Harden, there were a number of different issues that have been raised this evening. In particular, I think most relevant is, deals with the clarity of the ordinance and the criteria. Mr. Lovekman, maybe from the attorney's perspective, you may want to address that, but I'll look to Ms. Coleman as well. Also, the question that came up about consistency with other jurisdictions, I want to make sure we're clear on that, because my understanding is that the staff has done outreach. It's a little bit of a monkey wrench, somebody to come up and say, I've done my own homework on this, and it's not accurate. So I, you know, the council needs the best staff feedback on this as possible to make sure that the information, not only that we have, but the public has, is accurate on this. So, and then there's some other questions that came up, I mean, I'm sure I saw Mr. Harden furiously taking notes, so maybe all of you can try to address some of the comments that came up from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to begin to address Mrs. Schmidt's question on where other uses that the zoning administrator may weigh in on with respect to parking requirements. And there is a general provision in the zoning ordinance under the parking regulations that stipulates where a specific use is not identified clearly with parking regulations. The zoning administrator then evaluates that use based on its similarity to other uses and determines an appropriate requirement. So there is a very generic provision that gives the administrator that kind of interpret- So there is a very generic provision that gives the administrator that kind of interpretive authority, if you will, to where, where a specific use is not articulated specifically. So this would not be the, this provision that the proposed amendment puts forward is not unusual. It does occur in other circumstances. What came to mind for me in particular was something like a school of special instruction, which tends to be a karate school, a dance school. That's not articulated clearly, but I do evaluate the parking demand and then a requirement based on the particular operational characteristics of the use.
Ms. Coleman, may I ask a question of that? And I wanna make sure I didn't misspeak earlier, just to make sure I'm accurate, keep me honest here. The issue of, of final say, though, when the SUP process comes before the council, would that rest with you or with the governing body?
Well, there would be, my understanding is that once a determination is made on the required parking for a particular facility, that then is part of their special use permit application to the council, and if they want to contend that my interpretation is inaccurate, then they would include that in their.
So the council would indeed have final say?
That's correct.
Thank you. I just wanna clarify. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
That's okay. And then the final point I just wanted to make is with respect to other special use permit uses, I mean, this is not a mechanism that the council isn't very familiar with in terms of the review criteria. In fact, special use permit is the mechanism that we use for childcare facilities, for restaurants that offer dancing and entertainment, for churches in an R1 residential district, for restaurants with specialty food that deliver, such as Domino's. So, and just for those who may be unfamiliar, the criteria for the special use permit evaluation looks at not necessarily the particular service that's provided, but rather the characteristics of the use and how those characteristics may affect the items that I've listed on the overhead. For instance, the vehicular and pedestrian traffic in the area, trip generation to and from the site. If it's a new construction, we're looking at, of course, site design, how the 24-hour use, or if that's what it is, or how the other characteristics of the use may affect the surrounding properties, i.e. the serenity of the neighborhood. If there's a traffic generation, I mean, our streets do have a maximum capacity for what kinds of traffic volume they can handle, so we take that into consideration, as well as the particular design of the site. So we're really looking at the physical characteristics of the facility and how those characteristics fit on a particular property, and giving the city council the opportunity through the use permit process to evaluate each proposal case by case. So those were the two items that I thought I could address for you, but happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Does that help, Ms. Schmidt, in particular, your question?
Sure.
You have another question? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the, or several people, I think, brought up the example of LASIK surgery. Within the definition, where, where does that fall? Is that an office, or is that a medical use facility? It really will depend on the particular use. I am not familiar with a LASIK surgery that, that is the only operation or the only service that's offered. So at this time, as far as I'm aware, that's a complimentary service provided by, or complimentary, well, service is probably appropriate, provided by a doctor's office. So it isn't, that this facility is dedicated to just surgery. Now, if that is the case, then we're probably looking at a different view of the use. If that's, you know, if it is indeed simply a surgical facility wherein that's all they do, is the primary use. But if the primary use is really diagnostic and some treatment that may include accessory laser surgery, then that probably falls under the office use. But the process for me begins when the applicant applies for their non-residential use permit, and at that time, they are required to submit their business operations plan and a floor plan. So then, based on that information, I can start to gather some idea of the intensity of, of the particular activity.
Okay, and, and then one other question. In your comparison with the other jurisdictions and their zoning requirements, were, were the definitions the same? For instance, the definition that's, that's here for medical care facility, did that mirror the definitions in the other jurisdictions ordinances?
I believe it mirrored it. It's probably not exact, but I know that we did look, again, as I said previously, for the parts of other jurisdictions that we thought their regulations would fit with the city of Fairfax. So I don't know if they specifically call it. As a matter of fact, I don't think we all use exactly the same medical care facilities. I think some call them maybe healthcare facilities, and I might have to get a little assistance from mine.
The name can be different, but the, but my question is really about the definition. So on the LASIK surgery, would everyone treat it the same way as you just described? It depends?
Um, that, I don't know offhand, to tell you the truth. I didn't look with that specificity at LASIK surgery.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Other questions of staff? Any other questions that didn't get answered? Mr. DeMarco.
Yeah, I guess just a clarification, I guess, on methodology, 'cause it, it seems to me that there was a misalignment in the existing code on, on definitions, and that what I've seen in other jurisdictions is for medical care facilities, however you define it, that their parking requirements are based on number of beds versus an office, which is based on square footage. To me, that's an indication that a medical care facility, if it does have beds, and maybe not all of them do have beds, but if it does have beds, that's an indication that there's some extended stay, which would require more parking. The offices today that we have and the existing code would still require them to have a parking requirement of five cars per 1,000 square feet, whether that definition includes clinics or not, and that's staying the same, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. DeMarco. Mr. Rayfield.
Thank you. Would you just go back for a second? I think the mayor alluded to this earlier, and I, if, if you answered it, I missed it. You've indicated in the staff report that you, someone spoke to Loudoun County as well as the city of Alexandria, and that they indicated that they do, in fact, require a special use permit, but we've heard from a number of folks this evening that that, in fact, is not the case. So which is it?
Well, we also surveyed other jurisdictions. As I said in my presentation, we talked to City of Falls Church, and, we looked at the code, rather, the City of Falls Church and Arlington, I think it was Arlington County, and they actually treat it a little differently. As I said, City of Falls Church is in line with our current code, so they have not tried to address this issue. Arlington is addressing it through a different mechanism, the hospitals. Now, how they define hospitals, I'm not sure, if it was based on square footage or, you know, number of beds, but the hospitals are special use permit uses. Doctors' offices were not, and then in between would be the retrofit of uses, or rather buildings or facilities, to include medical use that would go to their board. So that would be through the site plan process. So we, that's a little bit more complex, I think, than what we're proposing for the city. However, my understanding is that Fairfax County, Loudoun County, and Alexandria, we, we are similar, we are more in line with them, with those jurisdictions.
The proposal is more.
Yes, the propose, sorry, yeah. So that would include a special use permit.
So if we wanted to have a medical office locate here, say a radiological office, they did a lot of exams, would they require, under what you're proposing, a special use permit, or would that be by right?
I believe that would be actually a by right, because we're looking for the medical care facilities to include hospitals, urgent care facilities, surgical centers, and similar. So again, I think the idea is if it's a radiology group, you know, your ambulatory, you're going in, you're having your radiology treatment, and then you're leaving, or your exam, or whatever that's there for. It's not inclined to require any sort of a several-hour stay, such as a surgical center, where there's likely use of anesthesia, you have to have an opportunity to recover from your procedure, and there's more medical assistance in a surgical center. You know, they're checking to make sure that you're okay to be discharged, whereas a radiologist may or may not. So I think generally, that would be by right, but again, I would have to evaluate that with the first non-residential use permit application.
So a GI doctor, for example, that wants to have an additional office here in the city of Fairfax and do colonoscopies where they would be sedated and the patients would be required to stay for several hours until they were able to walk out on their own, that would require a special use permit?
I think that's outpatient. I think that's, I think that would not fall in the category of, again, just on the surface and in a generic fashion, of hospitals, urgent care, or surgical facilities.
So i- is there a reason why we, we didn't attempt to really try to define this and provide more clarity so that it wasn't left so much to staff interpretation with the beginning of a non-residential, you know, special use permit, and that starts the applica, the process of, of the review from your office?
Well, I think the questions from the council are indicative of how difficult it is to define every single type of medical facility that might come to the city. I mean, we're obviously already seeing some evolution in that CVS offers many clinics. I mean, you know, that really, or, or, I think they're called many clinics, where, again, that's not their primary use, their primary use is retail sales. However, as a service to their customers, you can get a flu shot, you can probably have your temperature, your blood pressure taken, maybe, you know, get some sort of a prescription that a physician's assistant or a special nurse could perhaps write for you. So, you know, again, it's evolving into a light treatment of some medical care, but to try to concisely and clearly define each and every possible type of medical use, we thought would not be helpful. So the idea is to look at those uses based on their impacts on the adjacent properties, and, and that's what we're really looking for. And in my review administratively, that's what I'm looking for, is where do I think a property could not accommodate a particular intensity of use, traffic generation, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you. The chair's gonna recognize Mr. Brooke Hardin, our planning chief, for additional comments.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback on Ms. Coleman's comments, we, we did take a look at other jurisdictions. We looked at Fairfax County, we looked at Alexandria, we looked at Loudoun, we looked at Arlington, and, and as has been indicated, I think the, the primary reason behind not having a definition that outlines all the uses that, is that it was very, very difficult to try to outline all the uses. And what we found with jurisdictions that had updated their codes within recent years is they took a medical care facility approach, which covered a range of uses. Now, some had a tendency to be more commercial in nature. Alexandria doesn't include nursing homes and assisted living and those types of things. Fairfax County does include those types of uses. So there is some variation between those, those definitions. Arlington County doesn't define any of this. Arlington County lists use types within its ordinance and, and then defines whether or not they're by right or, or use permit, and so they got away from trying to define this at all. Regarding the parking, we, in conversations with Fairfax County, they, they have a blended parking approach for these types of facilities, which again is, is probably vague in the eyes of some, but what they've found is there are lots of things happening within medical care facilities these days, from offices to surgical centers, to cafeterias, to gift shops, to, you know, whatever. And so they've taken approaches, they're gonna blend those uses, and, and that's basically what we've done in this, this amendment, is to, to provide a baseline and then to look at the specific uses that are within that individual facility, which may be unique to that facility in and of itself.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Harden?
Yes, sir.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, one other issue. Just to clarify, City of Alexandria, in its general commercial district, medical care facilities are a special use permit. Staff did not inquire about types, specific types of uses that Alexandria would classify as a medical care facility, but it indeed is a special use permit. In Loudoun County, in its general commercial districts, a medical care facility is a special use permit. It's a by right use in some of its industrial districts, it's a by right use in some of its planned districts, where a general development plan will be coming forward and be approved individually, but those are indeed special use permits as they are special exceptions in Fairfax County.
Very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Harden. Any remaining questions of staff? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing is closed, and the matter is now in the hands of the city council. Mr. Stombrays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, the city council not, oh, pardon me. I move that in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, the city council adopt the proposed text amendments to City Code Chapter 110, Article 1, Section 110-4, Chapter 110, Article 2, Division 6, Section 110-155, Chapter 110, Article 11, Sections 110-701, 702, and 705 in Chapter 110, and Article 13, Sections 110, 761, and 762, to establish regulations with respect to medical care facilities within the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Stombrays, seconded by Mr. DeMarco. Comments, please. Mr. Stombrays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanted to move this motion to be able to explain my position on this, obviously controversial issue. Several weeks ago, we had similar testimony from many people from the community and around the area that were on the other side of this issue, and they brought similar stories, similar emotion, similar passion, similar to some of the moving testimony that we've heard tonight, after the staff had denied an recent application for a facility in the city of Fairfax based on what turned out to be one parking spot. There's really no, in my mind, justification for such controversial decisions being made at the staff level. We are the city council, we are accountable to the people, we run for office, we knock on doors, we listen to people in this community. However anybody feels about this issue, I am not comfortable, and I never will be comfortable, having such a controversial issue being decided by somebody that isn't accountable to you, by somebody that does, is dedicated to this job, but doesn't go out and listen to the community, and isn't held accountable for their actions every time we're up for election. So I have no interest in circumventing the law, I have no interest in driving a political agenda. What I have interest in is the people that sit before you on this dais being responsible and accountable to the residents of the city for the decisions that we make on behalf of the residents of this city. So I wanted to make that clear. I know a lot of people feel like there's another agenda here. That's not my agenda. I wanna be held responsible for the decisions that I make, and when you're dealing with such a controversial issue, and what is clear to me is that it is impossible to remove fully all the subjectivity in the code. We experience this in almost every issue that comes before us that isn't just totally cookie cutter, and that's very few. You just have to make a judgment call, and when judgment comes into play, particularly on controversial, controversial issues, I run because I want to be the one that makes those decisions, and I wanna be held accountable for it, and I don't want anybody else to be responsible for it. So this, in my opinion, this is an effort to do just that, to remove that from the hands of our dedicated staff and put it where I believe it rightly belongs in the, in the governing body of the city. And I understand that there will be disappointment, no matter what you do on either side of this issue. That is just the nature of, of our environment that we live in today, but I believe this is the right course of action for, for our city, and look forward to the comments of my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stombrays. Thank you, Mr. Stombrays. Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have before us tonight is a zoning text amendment requiring a special use permit for a medical care facility. It's important to make sure that requirements for zoning text amendments are clear and objective, and I just don't feel what's before us tonight is clear enough relating to parking. I would like to see more specifics, and I'm not going to be able to support this, and I would encourage my colleagues to vote against it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Other comments? Mr. DeMarco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, maybe I'm naive, and that's possible, but I don't see this in any way being politically motivated. I don't see it in any way to limit access to health care in this city or in any particular aspect of health care. I see this as an opportunity based on a medical care facility that could require, based on that use, different types of infrastructure that may require varying lengths of stay, that a special use permit would allow city staff to do an analysis based on that, that could quite frankly have an impact on the parking required for that type of facility, regardless of what type of facility it is. And so, I think it's important for us, I hate to say it, but like any other development project that we do, where we look at the intended use of the facility and the parking requirements for that facility, to understand exactly what they are so that everyone has equal access to that facility. And so, I think a special use process and then coming before council is the right process to look at these types of medical care facilities.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeMarco. Other comments? Anyone else? Mr. Meyer?
For some of you who may not know, I've spent the last thirty years of my career working for a federal regulatory agency in the area of engineering electric power generation, so it's not anything related to the issue here in before us, but for thirteen years, I was the chief of the agency's rulemaking branch. And so, we spent, and I'm still in charge of that function at a higher level, but have lots and lots of experience in drafting regulatory texts and requirements for all kinds of public health and safety requirements, for nuclear power plants in particular. We had some guiding principles when we were drafting regulations. One, there would be clarity and consistency, and we would go out of our way to avoid ambiguity. And we had, these are our guiding principles to guard against well-meaning staff, present and future, in making decisions that might unintendedly be arbitrary or appear to be capricious. This issue of fairness is something that reasonably, reasonable people can reasonably disagree on, and there's always that creative tension when you're trying to develop those kinds of standards. Mr. Stombrays did note that we had some impassioned perspectives on this particular issue several weeks ago, and I have to say that I am disappointed. I think the staff made a good faith effort to try and be responsive to some requests for clarity in this regard, but I find that the proposal before us tonight fails the test of clarity and consistency, and treating physicians and dental offices differently from clinics just continues and creates another form of ambiguity. I also believe that, as one citizen noted, that we are on the cusp of looking at our zoning regulations in their entirety. And to single out this particular activity at this time, I don't believe is appropriate, and I intend to vote against the motion. I also believe that there's a role and a responsibility for the council, and that is to set the general policy of the agency, of the city, and then to provide clarity to the staff to carry out the day-to-day administrative activities of the city. And to simply say that we want to take this particular scenario and bring it before the council in the form of a special use permit process, I believe, from my principle and from my perspective, is something that is not really appropriate. Now, and I don't believe that by saying that, it in any way diminishes my accountability to the citizens in terms of the policies that we develop here in the city. I just, I find that this particular ordinance, as it's presented to us tonight, simply doesn't meet the threshold for clarity and consistency, and so I intend to vote against it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Drummond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for their comments, and thank you to the public for coming out tonight. We have heard a lot of passion on many sides of this issue. You know, from my perspective, this is really a zoning amendment, a text amendment that is intended to clarify existing language, allows a council, and more importantly, you, the public, the opportunity of a voice in the outcome of where medical facilities are located in the city. So, no different than other processes we have that relates to dancing, entertainment permits, social service delivery establishments, and other uses where the public may be affected by their use. So, really what, you know, my focus in wanting to have something like this on the books is to allow for the public to have input on the S U P itself, and to have input on the facilities that go in the city. And I think we are being consistent with other localities requiring an S U P, including Fairfax County, city of Alexandria, and others. However, I think this needs some more fine tuning. I think the public has raised some valid questions. I think the staff has done a fantastic job, but like with anything else, we can always improve upon it. Some of my colleagues will remember, we went through a similar exercise a couple of years ago with the social service of delivery ordinance, where we did some more fine tuning, getting back to stakeholders, and I think we came back with an ordinance that was acceptable by everyone on side of the issue, and Mr. Wetzel, I believe, was actually involved in that discussion, and I think what we found, it was a collaborative discussion. We may not be able to have that happen here, but I would like for the staff to go back and look at this more deliberatively, put some more fine tuning on it, and for that reason, I will not be supporting the motion that's been made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drummond. Mr. Greenfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, to my colleagues who have expressed concern with the ordinance as it's drafted, and perhaps, Mr. Drummond, you were the closest one to moving in that direction, did, were your comments intended to, a motion to defer, so a substitute to the main motion, or are you just voting against it? Because I think if we're concerned about this, I'd say this to anybody up here who has said they're going to vote against it because they think it needs more work, then it's our job to push this back to the staff and to, whether it's tonight or in another work session, to further define what the concerns are so that we can, Mr. Mayor, you can certainly jump in here and correct me, but so that we can then get back to, in the ordinance that we can adopt. So, I'm curious just to have some dialogue with any of my colleagues who expressed concern. I'll give the floor to the mayor.
Well, the only, and certainly, it's the council's prerogative to defer. I just want to remind the council that at the next meeting, we have, for example, five public hearings on that evening as well. So, it's certainly the choice of the council if they think that this needs more work, but I concur with Mr. Greenfield, if this is an effort, if you're opposed to it for the sake of being opposed, and I prefer to have a straight up or down vote. I think that's the better way to go and approach city business. However, if the idea is truly to try to enhance the ordinance and make it effective and better, then deferral is an option, but that is your choice.
I haven't heard answers yet.
Other comments? There is no motion to defer on, we have a motion on the floor currently. Is there, are there any? Yes, sir, Mr. Drummond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion, defer this action to a date to be determined later.
Yeah, I don't believe that we can do that. Is that, Mr. Attorney, don't we have, we have to have a date certain?
That's correct. Give us, the meeting in July would be the next one, or September?
That's the 23rd, and that's going to be a very busy night. So, do you have another date, Mr. Drummond?
September.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have to look at, fill my calendar out. I'm sorry?
This is the second regular meeting in September. I'm just picking it. It could be the first one for all I care, I'm just making a-
I agree with Mr. Greenfield's recommendation to the second Tuesday in September.
Do you have a date certain?
September 10th or September 24th?
Mr. Drummond, what's your prerogative, what's your pleasure?
I would suggest actually September 24th, then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is the intent to defer this with the purpose of having a work session on it, or to continue, you've closed the public hearing on it at this point, so you're deferring it to, what's the purpose? Because the only, the only thing you could do on that date would be action, unless you want to have a work session on it and bring it back at a later date. I'm just trying to figure out exactly where you're going with this.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Drummond?
I believe what I'm hearing from my, some of my colleagues in public is that more work can need to be, need to be done on the ordinance based upon some of those comments. So, if a work session's called for, then that may be the case, but in terms of the process, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, do we have to actually take a vote and, on the actual main motion, then come back later, bring up this issue again after a work session?
Mr. Mayor? Or you could, like you said, you could defer to a date certain, and then as a staff, we can confer with you all and figure out how best to proceed from that one.
Well, and we can also re-advertise if we want to.
Absolutely.
You know, Mr. Drummond, I'm just going to say one thing, this is not very politically correct, but I view that the, I don't know if it's inconsistencies or the vagueness of some of the aspects of the staff report, the political questions that have been raised here tonight, and those who know me in the audience know my politics, they know I am, tend to be, and I can't believe I'm going to say this in public, probably one of the more liberal members that has served in this chair in the last fifty years. I don't believe that those concerns, though, are going to be addressed by the staff going back and reworking this. I think the sensitivities that we're all feeling are just the political sensitivities here, and I think personally speaking, we ought to have a straight up or down vote. I prefer that, I think it's a way to go. It's obviously your choice to move, to defer, and to, and the council's prerogative whether or not they choose to accept that, but dragging this out for the sake of additional feedback, I don't believe is really going to address most of the concerns that are out there, because I think those concerns are still going to exist even if we answer every question that was raised here tonight and then pass an ordinance. So, and I'm going to say one other thing, because I see some of our guests from other groups that are here, and this is not, again, very politically correct, but I feel like I'm probably in a better position to say it than some of my colleagues. I don't appreciate some of the groups, outside groups, and I'm talking about NARAL, and I'm talking about other groups parachuting into my community, our community, and spreading some misinformation, because I've seen the emails that have gone around, and I've had to correct them, both with reporters from newspapers and with television reporters. This is not an issue specifically to address abortion. This is an issue to address medical uses, and as Mr. Stombrays has said, to give us the accountability to address these issues and have straight up or down votes on them. In fact, the irony in all this, as we've learned, is that the clinic came to us a few months ago, or came to the city, and was rejected at the staff level. If this had been an S U P process, we would have been hearing that case, and in fact, we didn't hear the case, and it was shut down at the staff level. So, there's an irony in this, which is that actually, we would have been considering it and probably voting straight up or down on the issue had we had that opportunity, and again, holding the council accountable. I think that's a fair way to do business, and frankly, as Mr. Stombrays said, it's, we ought to be held accountable for these types of issues. So, anyway, that's just my two cents. I know it's not going to sit well with everybody, but I felt like I needed to get it off my chest here tonight. So, with that, Mr. Drummond, do you have, we have a motion, has it been seconded? Okay, there is no second, I thought he moved to a date certain. There is no second, though. Does anybody wish to second Mr. Drummond's motion?
I don't believe he gave a date.
He gave this, 20, 24th of September.
September.
Is there a second? Dyes for lack of a second. Okay, we're back to the original motion. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield, go ahead.
Thank you, and Mr. Drummond, thank you for offering that. The lack of a second clearly communicates to me what the motives were for saying somebody's opposed. You know, clearly, we can go at this forever and ever and ever, and maybe tweak it around the edges and get a little bit more and more closer, but at the end of the day, no matter what we do, folks are still going to be unhappy. I'm not looking at this, I don't have any political motives in having this come before us. I tend to agree with the mayor that, I feel that issues of this, it's really up to this body to determine whether a use is appropriate and where that use is appropriate. Do you want it next to a neighborhood, just like we look at gas stations, for example, and I'm not comparing a medical facility to a gas station per se, but the point is, nobody wants a gas station right next to a neighborhood. So, it's this, but it's this body that ultimately makes that decision, and it's this body that should ultimately make the decision as to whether or not a medical facility is appropriate for where it's going to be located. And I think recently of the doctor's office that's now taken over the building, brand-new building that had been vacant for a number of months at University in Leighton Hall Drive, we heard that use, and we could certainly look at, that didn't require, it required approval and special exceptions from this body, but that's the type of process that we should have to go through. We should have to go through the process of determining what's appropriate and where it's appropriate, not whether or not we're pro or anti one thing or another. This, to me, is not talking about nor defining the issue of abortion as some have chosen to try to do this evening. So, I hope you'll respect that, at the end of the day, some of us may agree to disagree, but this is about process, not about the substance of a particular piece of the issue. And so, for that reason, I'm comfortable in going forward this evening. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Greenfield. Thank you. Any other comments? With that, I am going to call for a roll call vote this evening, and I'm going to start with Ms. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Stombrays?
Aye.
Mr. Greenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. DeMarco, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Drummond?
Aye.
Mr. DeMarco?
Aye.
And the vote is four to two in favor. Thank you very much. With that, I am going to move to agenda item number nine, approval of the minutes of June 25th. It's been moved by Mr. Greenfield, seconded by Mr. Meyer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes unanimously.
May I abstain?
I'm sorry, there's two, there's two abstentions. Okay, we have two abstentions on that. Then, that concludes our regular meeting, and we're going to move into our work session format, and we're going to do that here this evening instead of moving out of the room, and we will ask for Chief Rick Rappaport to join us, please. Actually, you know, let me, let me, we're going to stay here, but I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. We're ready. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We want to reconvene our work session this evening and our first agenda item is a discussion on whether to permit archery hunting to control the deer population in the city. And first at bat, Mr. Sisson, I turn it over to Chief Colonel Richard Rappaport.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be with you again. This is a follow-up to our work session presentation at the June 11th council meeting. During that meeting, council requested additional information on a variety of issues on the managed deer hunting proposal, ranging from the evidentiary basis for the nature of the problem to legal questions regarding wildlife and hunting laws in Virginia. As I told you at that time, some of those questions were a little out of my league, so I've brought back up tonight. Let me introduce, with me tonight is Ms. Vicky Monroe, who's the Fairfax County Wildlife Biologist. Also Kevin Rose, the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries Wildlife Biologist. Captain Mike Arton, whom you all know well, the commander of our Special Operations Division, which includes our sharpshooters. Animal Control Officer Joyce Holden. And also, Ms. Monroe has brought some members of her staff, Jeremy Everett, who's the Assistant Wildlife Biologist in Fairfax County, and Master Animal Control Officer Forrest Higginbotham, a longtime member of the Fairfax County Department of Animal Control. Not all of those people are going to make presentations, so-
And a Fairfax High School graduate, Mr. Higginbotham. Want to make sure that's on the record.
Thank you for that addition. I'm going to now turn it over to Ms. Monroe to begin the presentation with just a very brief review of the issues and talking about the nature of the problem and the results that are being achieved by Fairfax County's urban archery program, which she supervises. And then I will come back to the podium and follow up with a very brief presentation that'll bring us to the actual issues that are before you this evening. Ms. Monroe.
Good evening. I will try and keep this at about 15 minutes, as promised. I know it's getting pretty late for y'all and I know you have another agenda item after this. So tonight, I will be speaking about the proposed City of Fairfax Deer Management Plan. I am the Fairfax County Wildlife Biologist, Vicky Monroe. I work for the Fairfax County Police Department, Animal Services Division, Wildlife Section. So I'll give a very brief introduction regarding my qualifications, an overview of whitetail deer, so you understand the animal before we go into why and how to manage it. And then the local deer management program, Fairfax County, and how that pertains to or is relevant to what we're discussing tonight for City of Fairfax. Okay, for myself, I have 10-plus years' experience. I've been the Fairfax County Wildlife Biologist since June 8th, 2009. I have a master's degree in zoology. My BS is in psychology, but it's animal behavior and biology. I conducted research on these animals, flying foxes, so flying mammals is what originally my management experience consisted of. So deer are very easy for me compared to that. So whitetail deer, Odecoyleus virginianus. As you may or may not be aware, deer, they're opportunists. They can eat a wide array of foods. They are herbivores, but I would say in an urban settings that they almost run more towards being omnivorous. They are known to eat trash. Does in the winter, studies have shown that they'll eat fish, anything to get protein, nutrients, minerals. They'll eat native plants, non-native plants such as exotic and ornamental plants, crops, including fruits, grains, and vegetables. All of this, the presence of this in northern Virginia, throughout the country actually, has contributed to a situation whereby we have year-round, non-natural, non-native food sources available for these deer. So an adult can consume five to seven pounds of vegetation a day. That adds up to a ton of vegetation every single year per adult deer. We have effectively doubled their lifespan in a natural environment where we actually have mid-sized and natural large predators and a lot more human hunters. Their average lifespan is five to seven years. In Fairfax County, I've actually aged does at 10 or 11 years. The oldest doe was 11 years. She was down near Mason Neck off a BLM property. She was 11, she had cataracts, no teeth, she weighed 65 pounds, and she was pregnant. So we have effectively doubled their lifespan. Why does that matter? It matters because there is no deer menopause. They will breed right up until their last season, until their last breath. So instead of having a doe that produces a single fawn their first breeding cycle and then twin or triplet fawns every season thereafter, they're now doing that for five to 10 years longer than what they normally would. Five-plus years longer. So deer management options, as you may or may not know, our regulatory agency for wildlife is the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. They have a whole stable of experts and they are a fantastic resource in northern Virginia and for jurisdictions and municipalities throughout the state. They actually have a 10-year Virginia Deer Management Plan that they release for 2006 through 2015. These are the deer population, the deer population status per jurisdiction. Since then, since 2006, they've actually added five or six more that I'm aware of. It may even be more. So right now, northern Virginia, we are in deer population control mode. And you're probably wondering, how is that determined? So what we look at is biological and ecological carrying capacity. Simply put, it's how much, what is the number of a population or density of a species that a local habitat can sustain before there's damage to that habitat? So traditionally speaking, we consider that to be 15 to 20 deer per square mile. A single square mile is 640 acres. And then there are differences for native habitat versus modified habitat. So in a place like Fairfax County, we can probably sustain a few more than 15 to 20 deer per square mile purely because there's a lot of gardens, a lot of golf courses, things like that. But not much more. Those deer actually right there are from a bait feeder, from a sharpshooting operation that we were running two seasons ago. In Fairfax County, the average number that we're seeing ranges from 40 to 100 deer per square mile, up to 400 deer per square mile at Bull Run Regional Park. So the way to go about deer population control, to manage a population that needs to be reduced over time, it requires utilizing a very comprehensive, integrated approach. Currently, in the state of Virginia, there are only three population control tools for lethal methods that are permitted. It consists of archery, managed hunts, and sharpshooting. I always say, and I always promote and encourage people to supplement that approach with humane exclusion and repellency where appropriate. That doesn't always work. It's not always appropriate to put up a seven-to-eight-foot fence around every single property and every single park. So in Fairfax County deer management, we've run a program since fiscal year 1998. The first managed hunt was January 1998, following our first confirmed human fatality from a deer-vehicle collision. That was October 16th, 1997. It was a schoolteacher in Great Falls. So when I came in, in 2009, it had been 10 years since we had actually done a deer management survey, soliciting feedback to get constituent perceptions regarding deer management. The questions ran the gamut from lethal to non-lethal. For the purposes of tonight, I'm only going over the results for the lethal means. I'm more than happy to provide electronically the full survey, going over everything. So here's the results of the first question. We had over 6,700 respondents. It was an online survey. So here's our second question. For its purposes, do you feel it appropriate to control the deer population? So what I thought was most interesting is that the highest level of support was to protect native habitat. And then after that, it had to do with public safety and human health concerns. So obviously deer-vehicle collisions is a big one. And then, please indicate your level of support for methods to control the deer population. So the most interesting detail to come out of this was that archery actually had greater support overall than sharpshooting or managed hunts. It was assumed that because police sharpshooting is, was the primary tool for eight of our 10 years before I came in, that police sharpshooting actually had or enjoyed the greatest level of support. And in all actuality, it is archery that has the greatest level of support.
I have one question on that.
Absolutely.
When you say support, do you mean effectiveness or do you mean, what does support mean?
Public perception.
Public perception.
Yeah.
But what is the truth? Meaning, which was more effective? I've told the chief repeatedly that in reading your website, I had seen indications that sharpshooting was far more effective than archery.
All right, so now I see your, sorry.
Go ahead.
I see your question. What I've found from a sustainability perspective, archery's been the most effective. Our first 10 years of the program, we took 2,630 deer with an average salary, or an average budget for the deer management program of $100,000. So that's 260 deer per year, on average, $100,000 a year. When I came in fiscal year 2010, the budget was slashed to $44,000. In four years, we've taken 3,300 deer.
Mr. Meyer's a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor's question was about effectiveness, and you were defining effectiveness in terms of cost effectiveness.
Well, for-
There are other measures of effectiveness.
That's right.
Well, that was what the second part of the information. As far as numbers go, harvest yield, with the primary tool being used, sharpshooting, the first 10 years, we took 2,630 deer over 10 years, at an average of 260 deer a year. With archery as the primary method, we've taken 3,300 deer in four years.
But that could be because there were more deer, or there was more publicity, more participants?
It's definitely archery.
More often, right.
No, it's definitely archery. I've had to cut back a lot of things. So what I've found is that archery has enjoyed the greatest success from an effectiveness standpoint and a sustainability standpoint financially.
Now, these bow shooters are private citizens who've gone through training and get approved by you to participate in this. Is this correct?
Yes, sir. Yep.
All right.
And I'll go over that a little bit more.
All right, press on.
So for the deer man, oh, and I do have to say, I'm not a hunter. I don't hunt. So I have no hidden agenda promoting or proposing or pushing lethal means as a method. I'm not a bow hunter, so I don't have any particular desire.
Yeah.
Other than as a biologist, is what I'm saying. So when I developed the archery program in 2009, it was purely from a scientifically-based deer population control perspective. So the primary objective is deer management at select sites, either to manage the population, to maintain the levels, or if possible, to reduce the overall number of deer, the density. The considerations, obviously, working for our police department, public safety is the main one, discreet would be nice, that's preferential, effective and safe. Is it a major wildlife corridor, meaning are there stream valleys that the deer stream through? Is it a resource-rich site? What's attracting the deer? What's keeping them there? Are they just moving through? Are there established herds that are actually bedding down in that area? There are a lot of different considerations that I look at when going out and doing site reconnaissance. For the site selection criteria, because of limited budget, I look at environmental damage, deer-vehicle collision hotspots. I work with our Traffic Bureau Division to map out where deer-vehicle collisions are occurring. And tick-density hotspots, we work with the disease-carrying insects program for our health department. This is a deer-vehicle collision that occurred in 2010 at Sully Woodlands. I was friends with our former range master, who moved over to the Traffic Bureau Division. He went out there, snapped a photo on his BlackBerry, and emailed it to me. Luckily, there was no one in the passenger side, so. This is a charming photo of a doe infested with ticks. We see that quite a bit. We're currently running a three-year pilot study using four poster deer treatment stations to apply pesticide on deer to kill the ticks. And then environmental damage. So we're looking at deer browse. In the upper right-hand corner, that's actually a photo of some bushes from an animal control officer who took that photo and then emailed it to me. The photo on the left is not from here, but it's stark, and I just wanted to show that. So you can see the harvest by strategy. This is what I was discussing regarding harvest numbers and then going by strategy from sharpshooting versus archery versus managed hunts. In 2011, we were awarded an achievement award by the National Association of Counties for innovation, primarily because of the archery program and our pilot study. So it's about taking a comprehensive approach, when possible. So getting into urban archery, 70% of our deer management program harvest is a result of our archery program. So this last season, we took 696 deer from the archery program, 1,010 deer overall. That's a picture of a tree stand. If you aren't a hunter, or you aren't familiar with hunting in general, you may not know that they are required to be from elevated, an elevated place, usually 15 feet. But it can go anywhere from 10 to 20. So they are up in a tree stand. The ground is used as a backstop. In the history of urban archery in the state of Virginia, there has not been a single recorded non-target injury or fatality as a result of archery. There have been quite a few from firearms. So there are added considerations in regards to safety when using firearms. So that's the overview. I'm more than happy to take additional questions. This is what I feel, after much discussion with the chief and with animal control folks, and the understanding of what you all are facing in the City of Fairfax, what the objectives are. And I believe it's to manage the local deer population. Right now, we are at critical mass in many areas in northern Virginia. It really comes down to their reproductive capacity. I'm fond of saying they're like large, attractive cows, and they breed like rabbits. So it's not their fault, it's just how they evolved. An actual deer population can lose 40% of that entire population every single year and still maintain healthy numbers. And we aren't seeing that sort of loss and gain. It's just a gain, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me, let me start out, if I may. I have one quick question, just getting back to the issue of archery versus sharpshooting. One of the other questions I had pertaining to that, my issue, this issue is, I've vetted a bit in the, in the media over the last couple of weeks, but the issue of guaranteed success, I guess, I hate to use any other term, but archery, I have been told by members of the Washington Humane Society and others who have, have had similar archery experiences or programs, has led to an inconsistent level of success. Meaning that, well, I appreciate your touting the numbers that you gave me. There was an example, I think in Rock Creek, that was pointed out to me where a deer lived for over 24 or 36 hours, and they chased that deer literally with an arrow in it for a matter of, of, you know, those, that day and a half, trying to catch it. You know, from my perspective, cruel, cruel and unusual, and I actually think that sharpshooting, there's a stronger case in my own mind that can be made for sharpshooting from that perspective, you know, the cruelty aspect. Can you address that?
Yes, and I think that's a great question. Before I came in and took over the deer management program, I used to be an animal welfare officer with the Humane Society of the Pikes Peak Region. I'm not a hunter. So when developing the archery program and taking over sharpshooting and the managed hunts, humanness was a huge issue for me. Prior to 2009, we were not tracking what you are referring to as a wounding rate, meaning an animal has been hit by a projectile, whether it's a bullet, or a bolt, or a bow, an arrow, and it has not been recovered, or there's been an inappropriately long length of time before that animal is recovered. So the wounding rate, we started tracking that. We actually found that for one season, it was 3 point, I want to say about 3.5% for the wounding rate for archery. We had it at a little under 5% for the sharpshooting. And for managed hunts, it was over 10%, purely because we were using public hunters. So with the sharpshooting and archery, those were our two most humane. When we're talking about humanness using lethal means, we're talking about how quickly the animal can be dispatched and not prolonging its suffering. That's what we're talking about. So sharpshooting and archery, and it absolutely depends on the hunter, whether it's a police sharpshooter, or whether it's a privately screened bow hunter. So that's critical, I think.
Well, I made it very clear to our chief that I'm absolutely in favor of our own police sharpshooters doing this. I'm not necessarily in favor of the other, but that's just my own opinion. Let me turn now to my colleagues. Mr. Stomperes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to compliment you on your presentation. It was very informative and very well done. I truly appreciate it. It did discuss the issues of vehicle accidents and damage to private property and disease transmission. Now, one question I had is, as somebody who knows deer, maybe not as well as flying squirrels, but do you see, when there is an overpopulation of deers, or do you see any incidence of aggressive behavior, or the inhumane conditions of deer that don't have enough food to survive and that, when there, when there's too much of a population? I really don't have any context.
And that's, that's a great question as well, and the answer is yes. From both sides of that, regarding increased aggressive interactions, you see, just because of the density, so deer are coming into contact more frequently with people. I've received actually two or three calls two seasons ago regarding individuals whose pets have been stomped to death by doeses. Interestingly enough, the doeses, not the bucks. They'll actually, they came up onto the back porch and stomped a man's cat to death. Another one, a King Cocker Spaniel, the doe broke the dog's back. And that comes with territorial behavior. So the doe had fawns. It was perceived that this person's backyard was part of her home range, part of her territory, and she went up to defend her fawns, and it resulted in the death of, of that individual's animal. I've also gotten reports of people getting clipped on the W and O D trail, deer streaking by, and they get knocked into by their bike, with their bike. We had our first human fatality from motorcycle vehicle collision two years ago, alongside one of our parks. Regarding the humanness, the condition of the animals, when you start reaching a certain density, exceeding a certain threshold, you start seeing deer with a lower body condition, increased parasite loads, both internal and external. You start seeing outbreaks of disease. We had our first chronic wasting disease deer. That's, that's in the same family as mad cow disease, chronic wasting disease. It affects deer. So we had that, not here, it hasn't reached here, but a few miles into our border from West Virginia. So you see a lot of things, and it's, it's distressing.
Thank you, because I, my interpretation of humane is also not only how quickly you can deal with a deer that's being dispatched, if that's the correct term, I'm not a hunter either, forgive me, but also for the remaining population, that they have the ability to survive and thrive without causing damage. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you're looking for input yet on what I want to do, or you want to-
Let me see if we can get questions all on the table first. If there's other questions, then we'll turn back to the council for recommendation. Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. It really was super.
Thank you.
Where, within the county, do you do these managed hunts?
I have selected sites throughout Fairfax County, so ranging from pocket parks, like 20 acres is the minimum parcel size. And then up to, I think our largest park is a little less than 1,000 acres. As far as huntable acreage, though, it's 20 acres, ranging up to 600, 700 acres. So it's a full range. And then depending on the site, that's how I then determine what the most appropriate management tool is, whether it's archery, sharpshooting, or a managed hunt.
And so for the smaller 20-acre areas, what, what type of hunting do you use?
For the smaller park sites, 20 acres, I only have one or two of those, and because of the small size and the limited huntable acreage, I use a single static sharpshooter. For the smaller stream valleys, ranging from 80 acres up to several hundred acres, it's bow hunting. It's the archery.
Okay. And, and then are you involved with any sort of hunting on private property?
I try and outreach and collaborate and support with private property owners as much as possible. In the past, I've had bonus sites that have been selected as part of the archery program, not for sharpshooting, because it's cost prohibitive, it's very expensive. But for the archery, Corbalis Water Plant was one of them, American Horticultural Society. So for the archery, I do work with private property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mr. Meyer.
I also want to thank you for your presentation. Very professional, I learned a lot. If you were employed by the City of Fairfax, and you were faced with our situation, which is, we only have one park that exceeds 20 acres. It's Daniel's Run Park. And the irony is that the largest, single open piece of property in the city is privately owned, it's a golf course. How would you, what would you recommend that we do in terms of, you know, methodology for controlling the deer population?
I would use a combination of sharpshooting and archery. With the private property parcels, I would lean more towards archery from a discreet, safe slash effective standpoint. I'm not sure how large your police force is regarding how many officers you would have available for sharpshooting. It's very resource-intensive using that management tool. So it'd be a combination of the two, but I would lean more heavily towards the archery and support wherever possible, private property owners using archery.
We don't have private property owners, residential properties that are in excess of a couple of acres. And I guess my, my concern is that, let me ask you this question. In the county, when you have these managed calling of the herd, herds of the population, and you're, let's say you're in a park of 100 acres, do you, what do you do to ensure that people don't visit the park or beyond the property when this is going on?
For sharpshooting operations and managed hunts, the parks are closed to the public. So for the public managed hunts, they're half-day managed hunts, and it's using publicly range-qualified hunters in assigned tree stands. Those only occur two or three times a year at one, maybe two park sites. For the sharpshooting, it's all done at night, so all parks are closed to the public. I rely heavily on a trained volunteer force, if you will, to help secure access points. We have a small, dedicated team, I call them Team Deer. So it's, it's really just us and our sharpshooters and our volunteers, and we have to go out and we have to secure the access points. For the archery, all the parks are open during the day. So they are permitted to hunt after they've been range-qualified, after they've gone through the selection process, after they've attended their safety brief, signed their waivers, and gotten their insurance policy. They're out there and permitted to be out there Monday through Saturday, 30 minutes prior to sunup, 30 minutes after sundown. And that's, that's when their hunting occurs.
Thank you very much. I, I just think that our situation here is so different, that it's, it requires a kind of, probably going to require a different approach. I live close to Daniel's Run Park, as, as do others, and many of the, if not almost all of the, of the property line, except residential yards, many of which don't have any fences. So controlling access of human beings to the park while you were doing that would be a pretty significant challenge.
That's, I've been looking at very closely how your properties are laid out, and it is very challenging. And you have a range of City of Fairfax Park Authority sites, some regional park authority sites, the private property sites. For me, part of what I do is I do a big push, outreach-ing private property owners, because in Fairfax County, the only way we're going to get things done is having private property owners approve hunters onto their property. And that's been a big sort of novel angle that we've had to take if we're going to do more comprehensive deer management. And it's, it is very difficult, and you'll have to take a very nuanced approach, but I think it can get done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. DiMarco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. You had mentioned that the deer population in the county is somewhere in the 40 to 100-plus range per square mile, is that correct? How do you, how do you determine the deer population? Do you do these infrared flyovers to, to try to get a good gauge?
To collect the baseline data and then to do the ongoing population monitoring, we use a range of survey techniques, ranging from camera surveys. The spotlight surveys are far less reliable, we've found. There's a great new study that's come out that sort of sets aside spotlight surveying as an appropriate methodology. But game camera surveys, we have to use bait for that, generally speaking. I have conducted aerial transect surveys out of our heliport. That was problematic. So the game camera surveys have been the, the most appropriate, reliable method that we've used. We do browse surveys, assessing environmental damage, so a combination of techniques. We do browse surveys assessing environmental damage, so a combination of techniques.
And so, I mean, that's how you understand you have a problem or not. I'm still not convinced that we have a problem in the city, based on anecdotal evidence, when you hear that on certain parcels where we've had a managed hunt, you know, that delivered, you know, two kills, where we've had less than a half a dozen, you know, vehicle accidents over a number of years. To me, that's not an indication that we have a problem, and until we get some data that would indicate that we're above the ideal rate of 15 to 20, or whatever the acceptable range is, that we, we don't need a, we may need a deer management program that would include data gathering, communication, training of citizens, et cetera, but we don't necessarily need to have a managed hunt send or archery or sharpshooting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Other comments, questions? Chief, did you want to have a concluding statement here? I wasn't sure if we were done here with Ms. Monroe's presentation, or... And again, Chief, I think your recommendation tonight is either to move forward with the managed hunt, or an ordinance banning the practice altogether. So, in other words, inaction is not what you're looking for from the council, is that correct?
I think it would be helpful to provide a clear ordinance, one way or the other, as to what the policy of the city is going to be.
Understood.
Let me just very briefly summarize the options focusing primarily on what's available to you tonight, and, and I'm going to go through this very quickly, you saw those slides in the first presentation. The first, of course, is just let nature take its course, and allow nature to deal with the problem, that's, that's more or less the path that we're on right now, and that's certainly an option. Reintroduction of natural predators, not an option for the city. Leaving aside the evidence regarding effectiveness and cost efficiency, trap and relocate is not a legal option available to us right now. Likewise, with fertility control, leaving aside the arguments about effectiveness and cost-effectiveness, it's not a legal option available at this time. We didn't really talk about supplemental feeding, but clearly that's not going to solve the problem in terms of keeping the deer population at a manageable level. All that's going to do is replace your landscaping and shrubs with some other kind of food that will sustain the population. We didn't talk a lot about fencing. Fencing certainly is an effective option when you're dealing with a smaller area, a single property, but it's not very effective at controlling the underlying problem, which is how many deer are there and at what rate are they growing. It also raises issues about zoning and aesthetics, et cetera, and where fencing is used, it tends to displace the deer from the, it's successful for the person who's displacing the deer, it's not very successful for the person whose property the deer are displaced to. Again, it doesn't go to the, to the underlying problem. Repellents are, on a similar vein, repellents have limited success. To try to use it over a widespread area is probably not very effective, very costly, requires a lot of replacement. I, I don't think it's really an option for the, for the problem that's, that's before the city at this point. Which really leaves us to, to the other, probably the only other realistic option, which is some kind of a managed hunting program. Just to briefly review, I, I think what, what Ms. Monroe is, and if I misstatement, misstate her position, she can certainly correct me, and you all can help her. But overall managed hunting, it's conducted primarily on large tracts of land, it limits the number of hunters, it provides for use of the harvested meat to support, I think, useful services. It is cost-effective, more so for some kinds of hunting than other, but it's certainly proven to be effective and sustainable in places like the county where it's been used over a long period of time, and in those places where it's been used, it enjoys, at least in the county, it enjoys a fair level of public support. Within kind of that large umbrella of some kind of managed hunting, it's been recommended to you that we look at approving some kind of an archery hunting program. As Ms. Monroe said, with regard to the actual lethality, a very well-controlled archery program using essentially sharpshooter bow hunters as opposed to sharpshooter rifle hunters has been proven more lethal than, than use of rifles. She didn't go into great detail, but she could certainly come back and talk a little bit about how they actually track that in the county. Every single arrow that's shot by a member of her, a member of the hunting program has got a personal identification on it, so if a deer's recovered somewhere else, they can tell that that deer was shot by a member of the archery program, and who, who that hunter was and where that hunter was by her records. Likewise, with reports by the sharpshooters, every shot is accounted for and every deer is accounted for. If 12 shots are fired, eight deer are recovered, you have a sense of it was either not an immediately fatal shot or, or missed completely, highly unlikely it missed completely, more likely you have a wounded animal that, that they were simply unable to recover. So I, I think their program does an outstanding job of measuring lethality options for the very reasons that she stated, because you, youmaness is a concern with what kind of program you approve. Most deer, as she pointed out, are taken in, in very close proximity with a downward shot that, that has very little opportunity to travel, ricochet, or cause injury to other people or property. A similar, a similar result, very similar result can be achieved with sharpshooters, although there is a much greater possibility of a high-power rifle round being deflected by a rock or, or some other obstacle. If it passes through the deer or misses the deer completely, certainly more of a potential for injury than, than presents with a, with bow hunters. Lastly, I think one of the most attractive elements of the, of a well-managed archery program is its cost-effectiveness. As Ms. Monroe said, to do two or three managed sharpshooter hunts per year is about $100,000 to, to do that. I don't think it's going to be any less than, in fact, it might be more, given the challenges we face in trying to secure the kind of parks that we have here in the city. By contrast, a well-managed archery program, the cost of the program is essentially borne by the private property owner, who's going out recruiting, recruiting hunters who bring their own equipment, they control access to, to the private property on which they're hunting, and at the same time, I think you can have a high level of confidence in the effectiveness of the program by virtue of regulations that you impose with regard to how accurate, how effective they are as marksmen, the kind of posting that they do on the property, the kind of controls that you put in place regarding who's doing it, under what conditions, under what, at what locations, fixed sites that are approved by, by the city, so that you don't have people in a deer stand 10 feet off somebody's property line. You all have the ability to control that, and I think, in a very cost-effective manner. So our, our recommendations are to amend the city ordinance to permit managed hunting of some kind. I would suggest to you that an option would be, within the ordinance, to also allow sharpshooter hunting by the police department on city property with the approval of the council, so that without having to go back and amend the ordinance, if at some, at some point down the road, that appears to be a better option, or we have a more widespread problem than can be controlled from a single location like, like the golf course, you don't have to go back and revisit the ordinance. You, again, have ultimate control over whether that program takes place or not, but at least there's legal authority for it to occur. Require, obviously, any, any DGIF approval, whether it's individual hunting licenses or kill permits. You can, you can add requirements that are above and beyond what the state DGIF requirements are. So for example, under a state-issued kill permit, a person doesn't have to have a hunting license, I mean, Mr. Greenfield made that point at the last council meeting, but you can require that, and it's perfectly legal for you to require it above and beyond what the state requires. A person of my young age doesn't have to go through a hunter's safety course, I've been through it twice with both of my sons, but you can require any hunter to go through a hunter's safety course, whether the state requires it or not. So there's a, a great deal of flexibility for the council to build in additional requirements and conditions above and beyond what might be required by state law. As, as I have strongly emphasized, this is, these are not the regulations that we propose, this is just an illustration of the kinds of things that you have the opportunity to regulate through a requirement slash condition process, things like the minimum number of acreage, what kinds of licenses, how stands have to be erected, where they can be erected, what kind of notice has to be provided to residents, and what kind of notice has to be provided to the city. This is just an illustration of the kind of things that the, that the staff can work with your direction to bring back. At the point we bring back an ordinance, if that's the direction you choose to go, we, we will bring back formal regulations, but we would look to get your guidance, not necessarily tonight, although we'd certainly take it, but as we develop real regulations and conditions, to run those by the council to see, does, is this the kind of thing that you're envisioning in terms of providing a safe operation within the city limits? So, the guidance that we're asking from you tonight is the direction you'd like to go with regard to an ordinance, either to clarify that we are going to specifically prohibit this kind of bow hunting, regardless whether there's a DGIF permit issued or not, or alternatively, whether the council will allow some kind of managed hunting, either on city property or on private property, or both, under certain conditions. And then we would need some guidance from you with regard to a general sense of the kind of restrictions you're looking for, and any, as I say here, any additional direction regarding policy, process, regulations, et cetera. That concludes my presentation. I will open it to any questions that you have of me or of anyone here from the county, Ms. Monroe, or from our DGIF wildlife biologist, or anyone else that you think might be able to help you analyze this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chief, that was indeed relatively brief by traditional standards, so thank you.
By my usual.
You know what I'm saying. Let me turn it over, if I may, to comments or questions by council. I'm Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any idea what the deer population is in the city?
We don't, and, and let me, let me invite Ms. Monroe back to the podium. We had, in discussions that she and I and members of our respective staffs have had in the last couple of weeks, she has been very helpful to me in understanding how, basically, she looks at the, the impact of overpopulation of deer, things like vehicle accidents, browsing patterns, presence in yards, things like that, as unnatural behavior for deer, and so when you see evidence of that kind of behavior, you can essentially work backwards to, to an understanding of the population that's beginning to be out of control. I probably am not doing justice that explanation, so let me ask her to talk just a little bit about that.
Ms. Monroe, why don't you, yeah, the podium will be fine, that way, Chief, you can stay there, and we can keep this moving right along.
Oh, okay. So regards to the population, I would say, yes, you do have a deer management issue in the city of Fairfax. It's not a closed system. It's within Fairfax County, it's an open system, deer do move. There is a home range, there are established herds, and there are very easily discernible herd patterns. I think if you don't agree that there's a deer management issue right now, it's not, it would then not be a matter of if, but when, and I think with strong leadership, addressing it now would be the appropriate way to go. It's better to manage a population which is steadily increasing, there is nothing currently limiting the population growth at all. There's nothing. With Army Navy, country club, the turf grass, the exotics, the ornamentals, the year-round non-native food sources, these deer will continue to increase the population. You have large stream valleys that feed in and out of Fairfax County into city of Fairfax, just adjacent to your municipality, there's Acotink Stream Valley. We've taken hundreds of deer with the archery program in the last three or four, well, the last three years. They use that as a major wildlife corridor. You definitely have a deer management issue, and I would strongly recommend, strongly encourage that you address the issue now, before you have your first confirmed deer, human fatality from a deer vehicle collision, or you start seeing a spiked increase in deer vehicle collisions, or wildlife disease transmission issues.
I, I appreciate that comment, the only thing I could say is that even with this, there's still that risk, and, and, you know, to say that this is going to mitigate all of that risk, I think is a little disingenuous. I want to be careful about overpromising on something like this.
Oh, I, it would not completely mitigate it. It absolutely, it absolutely would not, but to not-
What you said was pass this before you have your first confirmed, you know, death, basically, by a deer. This is not going to prevent that, I mean, potentially. It, it may help because it lowers the risk, but the fact is, the risk still will exist no matter what. I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Right, and thank you for permitting me opportunity to clarify then. To manage the population would be an appropriate method to reduce the increased risk, because you will continue to have an increased risk, so, thank you.
Sorry, that's more fair, thank you, okay.
Yes, no, thank you for-
Mr. Greenfield.
I'll try to be more gentle.
No.
Schmidt, were you not through?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment, a personal observation, last night in my neighborhood, most of my hosta's now gone, but I was amazed with the ease that, that this doe that I observed just was standing by a fence and then hopped over the fence. It didn't need to run, it didn't, it was a tall fence, and I would, I would categorize that as unusual behavior. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Mr. Greenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be gentle. Help me understand here, we're largely talking about an ordinance that would be in place for Army Navy Country Club. I know we could have the option to expand it to city parks, but deer are smart. It's, whether it's a rifle, shotgun, a pistol, a crossbow, or a recurve bow, it's only going to be a matter of time before they recognize that they are hunted. And if they're, they come out into, into the Army Navy Country Club, that they're going to go back into the woods, and if they're, the same is true in Daniel's Run, you're going to push them further and further back. How do you really effectively control the population if you're only talking about doing it on one property versus something that would be citywide? Because, you know, a lot of the deer that are seen aren't on Army Navy Country Club, they're, you know, in Pickett's Reserve, they're in Farcroft, they're in Daniel's Run, they're Mosby Woods, they're, you know, they're smaller neighborhoods, they're, you know, acre parcels of land. So how do you effectively deal with that? Because I haven't quite heard that part of your presentation tonight.
And that's a fantastic question. The main thing I would have to say that is that to a hungry deer, and we have a lot of hungry deer, food is a very powerful draw. So whether you're sharpshooting over bait, or whether you're doing archery without the benefit of bait, deer will keep coming if they need to, to an easily readily available food source. The other issue is, you see a generational effect, so each year, you have a small subset of the population that's new, it's their first season, their first ever hunting season. Does can only teach them so much. I hate to say it, but the young ones are kind of, I'll, I'll be kind, they're uneducated. So it takes them that first hunting season to become educated. You are correct, though, that the older deer, that they get smart, but again, hunger is a powerful drive, and we have a lot of very hungry deer.
So you talked about baiting quite a bit, and my recollection is through, I think, all of the Commonwealth of Virginia, that's not allowed because of the concern for chronic wasting disease, which I think was Frederick County is what you were referring to, coming over from West Virginia. So you're using baiting in, in your sharpshooting hunts, not your bow hunts, correct?
That is correct. Under my special permits from the state for the program, for sharpshooting only, for nighttime operations, we're permitted to bait. I do not permit that, and we are not permitted to permit that for our public hunters for daytime activity.
And for sharpshooting, what's the smallest acreage that you're allowing somebody to use a firearm? use a firearm?
The smallest acreage, the smallest park site that I'm using is 20 acres. It's a, I like to call them pocket parks, but I guess, to be honest, there's really no minimum size. If you're using a single static shooter over bait, you could use it on one acre. I haven't, I wouldn't, purely because it's very cost prohibitive, and we have a lot of larger sites that would benefit more greatly with a mobile operation, a mobile strategy. But your situation in city of Fairfax is a little bit different, so you'd have to tweak accordingly with what you do.
And how many of those are open versus wooded? So I know Bull Run, you know, some of that is in, in the open fields, but some of it's wooded, so what's the comparison?
Um-
I'm trying to, the city's very different, so, you know, we really don't have a lot of open parcels, other than the one 25-acre piece that, that really started this whole discussion.
Right. What I've found is I can put sharpshooters into open or wooded areas, we enjoy greater success because I can clear more shots with an open area, but at some of these park sites, it's just not possible. And so you have to be very sensitive then, and then it comes down to strategic baiting. If you're, if you're going the sharpshooting route, if you're using bow hunters with an archery strategy or tactic, then what they can do is a little more strategic than what we can do, so, with wooded areas.
Okay. And the last piece, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talked about folks participating, or this being managed through your program. Your program allows a private hunter who has passed all of the requisite tests to participate in that program, or those are only law enforcement that are bow hunters?
It's program participants who have passed all of the requirements to participate in the program, so there's range qualification criteria. If you were to approve this, I would open this up as an extension of the archery program and provide the option of, I guess, supervision of the program. I personally, from a biologist's standpoint, think that for you all to start establishing baseline data, start collecting biological data with your bow hunters, age, weight, sex of the deer. But, yeah, there's range qualification criteria, they're required to have a $1 million liability insurance policy in place. I structure it that they have to be part of an archery group. They don't go out and hunt en masse, that's not how bow hunters operate, but for management and supervision purposes, they have to be part of an archery group. They nominate an archery group liaison, who's my primary contact, and does the weekly reporting. There's incident reports, harvest data reports, hunt logs.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenfield. Other questions? Mr. Meyer.
When you've had these sharpshooters working at night, are they using night vision?
Yes, we have night vision equipment. Our static shooter, who works at the range, he has his own night vision goggles. As part of wildlife section, my staff and I, we have thermal imaging equipment, and we rely on that heavily. It's definitely a critical piece of equipment, and if, my assumption would be your department already has thermal imaging equipment, but if not, acquiring that, it would be certainly a good investment.
What about, do they put silencers on there?
It is a suppressed rifle, so we use .308s.
Okay.
Yeah, I do have to say, though, with suppressed rifles, they still make a noise. So sometimes with our, our small pocket parks, it's like shooting into a bowl, and the sound that it makes, that's why we have to submit an ops plan that's drafted, and then we have to notify dispatch because we do inevitably get phone calls, shots fired at night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Chief, that concludes your presentation as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tonight, chief, just to make sure I understand what you're looking for, you were looking for us to either move forward with bow hunting, or move forward with an ordinance prohibiting the practice altogether. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We will need to bring, we will need to create an ordinance with the assistance of the city attorney and bring that back to you for approval. We just need direction on which direction do you want to go, and we will then hopefully craft an ordinance that meets your requirements.
Okay, great. Ms. Schmidt, let me turn to you first.
Well, I, as I said last time, I am in favor of pursuing an ordinance to permit managed hunting.
Okay. Mr. Stombrays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do accept the testimony that I think we have a growing problem that is going to get worse. I think it's in our long-term interest to manage the wildlife population. I'm concerned about vehicle safety and damage to private property, to public property, and the vegetation, disease transmission. I think a program to manage the deer population has to be done in a way that's safe and humane, that is the least intrusive and most cost-effective. And I think we, recognizing the need for clarity, I would not be in favor of a, of a sharpshooting program. I just, again, my instinct is that is, this city is too small for that type of program. I know that it can be done safely, but I feel like the risk is, is greater than if we just did an archery program. So I would be in favor of directing the chief and the staff to draft an ordinance to come back to implement a safe, humane, well-regulated, and well-cost-effective deer management program.
Thank you, Mr. Stombrays. Mr. Greenfield, you want to pass for a moment? Mr. Meyer.
I'm a little more conservative in this, in, on this issue. I, I listened very carefully and heard everything that was said about the, the safety record of the different options. But in any activity such as this where the, the human element is involved, there's, there's, there could be human error and, and a certain last minute, last second element of human discretion and decision-making. And because of the population density and the land use that we already have in the city, the only, the only option for, for reducing our deer population that I would be supportive of would be to have our police officers in our police department, who are on our payroll, to use sharpshooting with advanced notice to certain areas. I would rather not have citizens either using guns or bows to participate in the program. So, I mean, I'm, I, I deal with these deer almost every morning, they're in my front yard. They have destroyed my landscaping more than one year. I personally have hit a deer with my car, not in the city, just outside of the city, and I was very fortunate that I wasn't hurt. This was about eight or nine years ago. So I, I know firsthand of the problem, but I'm very reluctant to, to establish a program, even with all of the safeguards and the, as you said, well-regulated, to have anyone other than our police officers participate in the program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would not be supportive of establishing a new program, and would rather look for non-lethal methods, if possible.
Rather look for, what, I'm sorry?
Non-lethal methods.
Non-lethal methods, okay. Mr. Greenfield, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I apologize. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am fine with going forward with a, an ordinance allowing hunting in the city of Fairfax as long as we are talking about doing something citywide. I think it doesn't make sense to focus on one piece of property for the very reason I articulated. It will not take long for those deer to be moving in other areas, and so if we're really talking about trying to control the population in the city of Fairfax, then we need to be looking at the entire city of Fairfax, whether it's Van Dyke Park, or Cutner Park, or Daniel's Run, or Army-Navy Country Club, or Mr. Meyer's front yard. We need to make sure that we are-
Bring out the sharpshooters.
Doing it, doing it well. I do not support, however, with all due respect, to our, our fine sharpshooters in the city of Fairfax. I think we're too small a jurisdiction. I know you can do it, but I personally think you're, it's too small a jurisdiction to be shooting a weapon in the city. And I do want to make sure I'm clear about one thing. Whether you're shooting a gun, or you're shooting a bow, every person who's done it, whether they're a hunter or somebody that's doing one of these managed hunt-type situations, will experience one point in their life, no matter how good they are, that they will wound an animal and it will take off. And you can wound an animal with a rifle, you can wound an animal with a bow. So it's going to happen, but I think training will reduce the likelihood that it will happen because folks practice all the time to ensure that they are doing well-played shots that will minimize the risk of an animal taking off. So I look forward to working with staff to further refine a, a policy as it comes forward.
Okay, Mr. Greenfield, I want to just be clear on this. You have said that you are not in favor of it as suggested by staff unless it was more expansive, a more expansive program to include the entire city.
Correct.
So as stands, I'm just trying to count heads here, you're in a little bit of a different place than your two colleagues on the right. You're, you're actually in favor of a more expansive program than they are, at least advocating at this point. Is that a fair way to say it?
That's a fair way. I'm saying if we're going to do it, and we need to, we need to do it correctly, and I, with all due respect, I don't think focusing on one 25-acre parcel is doing it correctly. So I, I think we should look at something that's more citywide.
Let me turn to my distinguished colleague from Mosby Woods, Mr. DiMarco.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, based on what I've seen here tonight as written, this is not a deer management program, this is a managed deer hunting program. And based on my limited research that I've done, a deer management program is more comprehensive than this. And the last element of a deer management program includes managed deer hunts, but first should include data analysis, where are the deer, how many deer do you have, a public education component, analysis on where the accidents are, mitigation steps on where those accidents are, understanding of incidence of Lyme disease, and whether or not that's attributable to deer or other small rodents, et cetera. The last element is the managed hunt. So I think we've skipped to the chase, if you will, and gravitated to that as a solution without doing all the other elements that I think are important as part of a due diligence, and so I'm not supportive as proposed tonight.
Okay. If I'm counting heads, I think we're relatively evenly split here. Did I say that right with Mr. Greenfield, perhaps a little further over to the right than the two, two on the end here? And then my other colleague's saying, let's pause either no, or have more information before we make a decision. I am going to, to side with my colleagues to my left and say that I am not entirely comfortable, as I've stated many times publicly already, with the proposed hunting with archery, bow hunting. I have less objections, ironically, to, you know, a, a managed, a sharpshooting approach to this. I think if it's done correctly and effectively, I think it can be done in a very safe manner, and it can be operated by our police department, which I have a lot more faith in than putting it in the hands of, of individual citizens. So that is my concern, that's where I stand. I think, chief, I think, you know, I am, I am willing to consider other options if they decide, if you, if you want to bring them back to us, but I think as it stands now, I don't believe there is a majority support, if I'm saying this correctly, to move forward with bow hunting at this time. Mr. Lubkman.
And I think the chief would ask this as well, then. Is there, since we still have kind of that gap in our code, is there consensus then to simply direct us to craft an ordinance to prohibit hunting, to clarify the issue with our existing ordinances?
Well, I, I appreciate the question, and I certainly teed it up that way at the beginning, but I, I think as it stands now, as it stands now, I would say yes, that I would not support any, I would support an ordinance saying that the practice will not exist. However, if there is a better approach, that you all think, even though you've heard us, and you've, you've advocated a particular direction, if you're willing to come back to us with a new direction, I'm willing, as an individual, to consider it. I, I can't speak for my colleagues on this side, but I'm, I'm still willing to have an open mind if there's an approach that will work.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That's, that's very helpful to us. Let me try to, let me try to offer some opportunities that, that address some of those concerns.
Really?
To, to Mr. Greenfield's concern about where this could occur, we, we have suggested as one possibility, it'd be limited to parcels of 25 acres or more. As Ms. Monroe has said, you could do this on parcels as small as an acre. So, so you, you have the ability to say, we would consider allowing some kind of managed hunting, whether it's bow hunting or rifle hunting, in some of our larger parks, in some of our smaller parks, on some of our smaller private property parcels. Tank Farm comes to mind, places, places like that, where deer may pass through during the night or whatever. That's certainly an option available to you. Secondly, with regard to how, who's doing the hunting and how, we've looked at archers on private property, and we've looked at, at police sharpshooters on city property. Neither of those is mutually exclusive. You could direct us to come back and say, we would be willing to consider using archers on some of the city property, and, and craft the program where archers, qualified archers would use bow, would use bow, bow hunting and non-weapon hunting on city property. That might even be police officers. We have police officers who are bow hunters. So, so certainly it doesn't have to be just police sharpshooters on city property and just archers on private property. That is certainly another, another option. The last thing I would say, and I, I'm not trying to prolong this, but I'm trying to answer Mr. DiMarco's question. We have two, we have the benefit of two experts here, one statewide game biologist and one Fairfax County biologist, both with years of experience, and I think it would be helpful, we might as well, we might as well answer that question right now. Can we get to a level of data that would, that would give Mr. DiMarco and everyone a comfort level? I don't know how much more data we could gather, and if we could gather it, at what expense we could gather, but I think while they're here, let's ask them. Because I, I don't know that I can meet a higher bar than what we've tried to provide tonight, so.
Of course, Mr. DiMarco.
Well, thank you. I, I mean, if we're going to have a deer management program, we have to be able to measure success, and unless we have some rigor on the data piece of it upfront to create a baseline, and then to be able to measure it as we have these managed hunts, we don't know if we have a successful program or not. If we don't have that baseline upfront and a methodology to provide that periodically over the course of several years, then in my mind, you have no program, and, and I'm not going to allow any, personally, I don't, I don't think we can have any.
Sure, I understand your position, and, and I think that Ms. Monroe is accomplishing that with the way she has developed the county program, but I'll let her speak to that. The data that they're collecting and, and what metrics they are gathering, as she said, every single hunt has reports about age and health and all that kind of stuff, and I think they have some data to suggest whether the things they're doing have been effective.
Okay.
Okay, so what I would like to say, just to sum it up, is developing and implementing a population monitoring program or component of a deer management plan is not mutually exclusive or incompatible this fiscal year with also conducting deer management lethal means. I think that it would be, because I agree with you, I think there has to be a certain degree of rigor, and from a scientific standpoint, there has to be baseline data to establish what the population is, and then to determine what your benchmarks are. But it can be done together, it doesn't have to be one then the other. For instance, my archery program component doesn't begin until September 7th. I will not begin the sharpshooting component until the third week in October, and managed hunts won't commence until November. So establishing what sites with park authority staff, or whatever city staff you would like to get on board, would be appropriate and valuable to set up game camera surveys in August and in September would be fine. I would strongly encourage you to begin doing that, and it, it's something that can be set up pretty quickly and be done appropriately. I would strongly encourage that. I would consider that something that needs to be done parallel with getting in deer management, hunting, to clarify.
Okay, where does this leave us? I think we're, chief, we're, I think you have your direction at this point. I don't sense that there is a strong urge, a urge on the part of the council to adopt an ordinance moving forward. Perhaps an ordinance coming back to us that would prohibit it is probably where things stand now, unless you want to craft a new proposal and bring that back to us in the fall. and bring that back to us in the fall.
I think the direction is clear. We will, we will develop the ordinance to make clear that at this point, we're not going to permit hunting in the city. And that's what we'll bring back to you.
Got it.
And if at some point you will want to revisit it, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you. And by the way, that goes for you all as well, if you want to revisit it. I feel, I'm trying to be somewhat flexible here. If there is a better way to get at this, I'm willing to consider it. Okay? Thank you very much, Chief. And thank you all for our guests from Fairfax County in particular and the state for joining us. Thank you very much. Chief, you're still up at bat. It's not like tonight has been void of controversial issues. Let's get into a new one. How about photo red light?
How about?
And I see we also have our transportation experts here as well. And this is a reconsideration, or this is something that's being brought back to us from a discussion we had earlier in the spring. So.
I get all my bats in one inning, right?
That's right, Chief.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, too, is a follow-up presentation. We were before you back on February 12th on a work session. During that meeting, council requested additional information on the intersections that we had recommended for expansion and also tasked staff to present an option for a phased-in expansion of the program. For the benefit of the citizens that may not have seen that February presentation, I'm gonna try to very briefly summarize the background on this issue to, for the benefit of those folks who are gonna follow your, follow, try to follow your discussion of this, of this issue. The, the city started basically when the Commonwealth of Virginia approved a 10-year pilot program. And we were the first jurisdiction in the Commonwealth to have a photo enforcement program. We started with one camera in three locations. Over the course of that 10 years, the city expanded that program to ultimately three cameras in eight locations. By the time the program ended, the city had seven cameras operating full-time at seven different intersection locations. One of the intersections was dropped because we simply couldn't get the quality of photo enforcement results that we were looking for with the equipment limitations that existed at that time with the technology at that time. The authorization for photo red light lapsed. It was reenacted in 2007 with some additional requirements. Currently, under the law, the city can have photo enforcement at no more than 10 intersections. There can be more than one camera at a single intersection, but we are limited by the code to 10 intersections. All the violations must be approved by a sworn law enforcement officer. That's a change from the 10-year pilot program in which a police department civilian employee could approve the summonses. That's significant because it takes, it requires us to take officers off the street to actually review the citations and approve the citations. We currently operate four cameras at three different intersections in the city. North Street and University has two cameras. Fairfax Boulevard and Fairfax Circle have two cameras. But because of the separation at the circle, by state standards, that's considered two different, legally, that's two different intersections, hence four cameras at three intersections. With regard to overall program performance, since we began the program in August of 2011, this is data that's valid up, up through the end of last year. On, with regard to program performance, we've reviewed probably by now nearly 25,000 possible violations. We issue about 92% of all the violations that we review. A number of those potential violations are screened out by the vendor that are clearly not appropriate violations. What's passed on to us, we approve about 92% of that. Of that, about one-half of 1% is contested violations. Of all the citations that we issue, about 93% of them go to residents outside the city of Fairfax. And that's probably a low estimate because what our survey looked at was how many non-residents who are outside the 22030 and 22031 zip codes get citations. As you know, in both of those zip codes, there are a mix of both city and county residents. So 7% of people who get photo red light violations live in 22030 or 22031. Probably the actual percentage of city residents, actual city residents who receive photo red light violations is probably less than 5%. These programs are intended to.
Chief, I'm sorry, we have one question from Councilman Meyer.
Thank you.
It's a follow-up to that. What percentage, could you go back to the other, what percentage of traffic would you estimate is, is city? So we can compare apples to apples. In other words, if it's no more than 7 and more likely less than 7%, does that mean that we have 7% of our drivers on, on the streets in the city? Or is it?
Um, let me ask.
I bet that's fair. I bet that's a fair, I bet that's a fair comparison.
It's a fair question. I wish I knew the answer. Let me, let me turn to Mr. McCullough or Ms. Sanford, because I don't know, I know we've done vehicle counts through the city, but I don't know what the percentage of city versus non-city residents. So Mr. McCullough could come to the podium.
The short answer is we don't have any exact data on that. But my professional opinion is probably the city traffic is probably between 7 and 10% of overall traffic. So.
So as, it would be an accurate statement to say that the city residents who are driving in our city drive at a slightly safer manner than people from outside the city?
They probably account for more than 7% of the traffic that's on the street and especially at off-peak times.
Okay.
I, that would surprise me, based on the fact that the county has a million people that's around us. But that's, you know, I don't want to bait you here tonight. But anyway, interesting question, though, it is.
That's simply going by the number of drivers we have in the city and probably the number of trips per day.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's a job for Ms. Sanford Block to find out. Go ahead, Chief.
As we've talked about many times, the goal of these programs is really to reduce the number of violations, not to raise revenue. This chart does show the total number of violations issued in the program, and this is accurate up to May of 2013. As you can see, the number of violations has steadily declined since program implementation. And we expect that trend to continue. This is data that we provided to you in the last presentation. But contrary to what potentially occurs in a lot of other jurisdictions and other intersections, our data showed the traffic accidents did not increase at photo-enforced intersections. There is some criticism that if you're not careful about where you put photo enforcement cameras, that you actually cause an increase in accidents. We looked at overall accidents. We looked at red light-related accidents. We looked at angle accidents. We looked at rear-end collisions as a result of, that occurred at intersections after, before and after the photo enforcement was installed. We did not show an increase at any single photo-enforced intersection. We have 58 signalized intersections on approximately 20 miles of primary roads in the city. And as part of our, this, red dots depict all of those signalized intersections. The green dots show the current location of the, of the three intersections where we currently have photo red enforcement. We evaluated all 58 signalized intersections against these criteria to determine those locations where we felt photo red enforcement would be most effective. We looked at all of these criteria and applied them to the 58 intersections. In that analysis, we eliminated intersections for a variety of reasons. We've listed the most common reasons why we eliminated different intersections in that list. I won't read them all to you. But suffice to say that it's a whole range of issues from violation rate through engineering issues to timing issues that caused many of the intersections to be eliminated. As a result of that process, we have identified what we believe are 11 available intersections at which we believe photo enforcement would be appropriate and useful for the overall traffic safety program in the city. You had asked that we further refine that list and provide accident and violation data for each of the intersections that we recommended. And that was provided to you in the staff report. With that analysis, we're coming back to you tonight and showing you what a phased-in implementation program would look like. We distilled that list of 11 available intersections to five locations with a single camera recommended at each, at each of those intersections. This list shows the intersections in the direction that we recommend the camera enforcement be installed. You asked for the supporting data. This chart depicts the data around each of those five intersections. The first column shows the number of accidents that have occurred between July 1, 2006 and essentially July 1, 2013. We picked July 1, 2006 because that's when our, our most recent CAD RMS records management system was implemented. And that's what we have accurate data back to. So that's, that accounts for that range of years. Shows the total number of accidents occurring at that intersection. The second column, summonses, that identifies the number of summonses issued by patrol officers for red light violations at each of those intersections. And then the violation survey column reflects the, the number of violations that were captured by our vendor. We give them a list of intersections. They set up camera and surveillance equipment, and they do a 24-hour count in each direction of the number of red light violations that they record around the clock and produce that data for us. So for example, I won't redo the whole list, but at 123 Chambers Road in Eaton Place, their survey showed 67 red light violations going northbound, 22 violations going southbound. And you can obviously look at the data for all of the intersections. The intersections that are, the approaches that are highlighted in yellow represent the approaches that we're recommending to you for, if you decide to go with a phased-in implementation program. Those are the five intersections where we believe the accident data, the summons data, and the violation survey would support as being effective locations to get essentially the most bang for the buck in terms of a reduction in, in violations over time. Those locations that we've recommended depicted by the green dots in this map show that they are geographically diverse over the arterial system of the city. We talked last time about the Arlington study, which showed that photo red light cameras have a longitudinal effect in both directions from the intersection where the photo camera is installed. And so we, we believe that a dispersment like this would give a significant longitudinal effect in the surrounding areas. Again, most bang for the buck rather than clustering cameras at, in close proximity to each other. You asked for data to talk to, I'm sorry. Excuse me, one minute here. I haven't.
Mr. Greenfield, questions?
Well, we were asked to provide data on revenue versus cost.
Right.
And I have that, but it's on, it's in a different place. This is the earlier, the earlier slide. If you indulge me one minute, let me bring that up. And I can show you that last slide. Because I know, I know that's something that some members of council won't talk about. Okay. I apologize. What I can provide for you, and I will send that out first thing in the morning. Finance did prepare a chart showing the cost of the program versus revenue received up to May of 2013. What that chart, what that chart will show you by quarter is the net receipts. In other words, the fines collected as a result of all, all the violations issued. It will show you the expenses of the program, and that varies slightly by month. There's an initial, there's an initial fee for each camera, but then there's also things like processing fees and credit card fees and things like that. And then lastly, the net revenue, which is, which is the net receipts over the expenses. And, and what that will show you is that over the, over the life of the program, there it is. Thank you. I was 600 words into 1,000 words to explain a single graph.
[laughing]
The, the, the red line illustrates the program expenses. As I said, that varies slightly, but not much from quarter to quarter. The blue line represents gross collections. That's the fines collected. And the green line is, is net revenue. And as you can see over the life of the program, what happens is, as you saw in the earlier chart, violations decrease. So revenue, so net receipts decrease. Program expenses stay the same. The longer the program goes, the closer the revenue line and the expense line come together, still with a significant difference, but much closer than occurs earlier in the program. You, and we saw this in the first 10-year program as well. Every time we brought an intersection online, we got a similar chart to this. The program is set up to be, our contract with the vendor is set up to be cost-neutral. Cost-neutral means that if at any point net receipts fall below the expenses, we don't pay the difference. So we never pay taxpayer dollars to the vendor to operate the program. If net receipts exceed expenses, then we obviously realize the difference is net revenue to the city. But it's cost-neutral in terms of, the city does not invest its own taxpayer money to operate this traffic safety program. I want to contrast that with the notion of revenue-neutral. It's not a revenue-neutral program. It cannot be a revenue-neutral program for the simple reason that we don't control the fine. The fine is established by the state. It's $50. Every citation that's issued, that's $50. Of that, a certain percentage goes to the vendor to operate the program. The only way we can make those even out is if you give more money to the vendor so you have no more revenue. If you control the fine, you could adjust the fine to reflect what the real cost is. But that's not possible. So it's cost-neutral, but it can't be revenue-neutral. The same is true of every other, frankly, every other enforcement program. The traffic ticket program, our traffic tickets aren't revenue-neutral. Our parking tickets aren't revenue-neutral. Criminal violations aren't revenue-neutral. That's just not the way the criminal justice system works. But we have done our best to make this a cost-effective and cost-neutral traffic safety program for the city.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ruman has a question.
Thank you. This chart is very, very helpful. I think, you know, we had a previous discussion about this at the last council meeting where this issue came up. And I think my concern was the delta, if you will, between how much we're putting out, how much, how much we're taking in. And I appreciate you clarifying revenue-neutral versus cost-neutral. To help me understand this a little bit better, essentially what we're doing is we're banking funds. So if you look at this blue line, we're banking those funds to pay for the vendor. And they continue to go down as the enforcement goes up. Is that how I should understand it? That fairly accurate?
Yes. I mean, even in, in the early parts of the program, this looks like a very revenue-rich program.
Yeah.
Because the number of violations clearly exceeds the expenses by a significant margin. But that's not why the program's put in place. And you can't sustain what the first quarter or so is. The goal of the program is to get to a point similar to where we are now. And my prediction is those numbers will continue to go down.
Right.
And that's why the neutrality is built in.
Which I didn't see before is sort of the purpose behind it. I know we've always said it's safety, and I totally agree and believe that. But I think this really indicates to the community, you know, that, that is our aim, unlike some jurisdictions around the country where you're probably seeing a far wider delta.
I would love nothing better for that blue line to be below the red line because it's still not going to cost us anything.
Right.
The vendor won't like that. But.
Right. Exactly. Exactly.
But the reality is, if we get to that point, and we're approaching it, if we get to that point, we're not on the, we're not on the hook in this contract to make up the difference. That's a significant.
That's a good point. So basically, if we dip below that red line, they've got to cover the costs no matter what.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you, sir.
And if there are questions, great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chief, just to make sure we've put a fine point on this, as was true with the program in the 90s, that blue line goes down because over 22030. in the 90s, that blue line goes down because over time we have changed behavior and we have reduced the number of red light runners in the city of Fairfax as a result of this program, which is exactly the design of the program, is to change behavior.
That's correct, Mr. Greenfield.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. DeMarco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The calculation of the expense, is that just the third-party contract or vendor expense, or does it include motor officer expense to help support the program?
That does not include salaries or indirect costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
All right. So, again, we come to kind of, I guess, what is, what is it that staff's looking for from council tonight to provide us some direction with regard to, is the council satisfied with the program as it currently exists? If you want to expand the program, we need some sense of in what direction with what intersections. As we talked about last time, there is, there is an issue of staffing that has to be decided one way or the other. Because when we add more, if we have more intersections, we add more workload. That workload has to be satisfied by somebody. We either take more police time off the street in addition to what we already take off the street, or we add an additional staff person who can not only do all that workload, but also supplements the other traffic enforcement things we do at the places where we're not adding photo enforcement technology. Because there's 11 other intersections, well, actually, there's, there's 50-some intersections that there aren't going to be photo red light cameras at, that people still expect us to go out and enforce the law periodically and keep their community safe. The difference between the time we're going to spend approving red light tickets and the hours available to that officer could support efforts at those other intersections as well. But one way or the other, if we add intersections, we add workload, and it's just a question of where the workload comes from. Who's doing it and at what expense?
Chief, let me ask a question on this, on this, I'm sorry, have you gotten to this slide yet? I'm sorry. Were you talking about workload? That's why I was going to ask the question.
Yes.
Whether, if you had your, you know, your priorities here, and would you place the emphasis on, the red light program is so important to you that you would suggest taking existing resources and reallocating them, or if that was the only option available to you? Or would you advocate instead, you know, going, staying the course with our current red light program without adding additional lights? In other words, if the option is not to add staff, because I want to understand how much of a priority this indeed is, and if it is, then you should shift existing resources, in my opinion, to address that issue. But I'd like an answer.
I guess, it's going to sound like a dodge, Mr. Mayor, but it isn't. I think that, I think I want to go back to Mr. Stomberg's comment about the, a couple of issues ago.
Those were great issues.
What I think is best, what I think is best for the city really doesn't count. I'm not the one who's accountable to.
Well, but when it comes to law enforcement, when it comes to law enforcement and, and, you know, public safety in this case, I, we want your opinion.
And I'm happy to give it. As I said, if, if, if we add additional photo enforcement cameras, I think there's going to be a real benefit in public safety in the city. And that's going to require someone to do the work to realize that benefit. If we added an officer, as we did, as this counselor, as a, as a council did nearly 10 years ago when we added Safe Neighborhoods program, that had nothing to do with technology enforcement. You simply added an officer and said, "We want an officer to be, to do more traffic enforcement in our residential communities." Mr. Mayor, you were on council at the time, Mr. Greenfield was. You'll remember there was a discussion about, "Yeah, we give you an officer, and we get results for a year," and then it just kind of disappears and it just becomes part of the baseline. 10 years later, we're still producing monthly tabulations of what we do in residential communities with that program. So, with more resources, I think we can deliver more, more public safety enforcement efforts and better public safety enforcement efforts. If, if you expand the program without adding the resources, we're still going to get, I think, a good bang for the buck. And I would encourage you to do that, but, you know, it's an incremental creep. If you add only one camera, it's only a little bit more workload. If you add three cameras, it's a little bit more. If you add five, it's a little bit more down the road. Let's take one of these intersections, Plantation Parkway, and you find, you know, another survey shows, "Wow, we've really reduced violations going eastbound, but westbound's horrible. We want to add another camera?" That's a little bit more workload. It's, you know, it's the frog in the pot of water. If you just gradually increase the heat, eventually you've got to cook frog. How'd you get there? Eventually, we can grow the program to the point that it's a full-time position, which is what it was before. This is something in between. I think it's worth doing, but it will come at an expense. It's hard for me to quantify what we're giving up to get it, but there will be a benefit. I think it's going to be a good benefit.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Okay. Continue.
I think, well, just briefly on the last three points, we are in the process of negotiating a new vendor contract. That's in process. That will come back to you separately. If you decide to expand even one intersection tonight, that will set in process engineering analysis and design, and then we go to installation and testing. So, it's, there's a multi-step process to get to actual operation of, of an expansion program, but what we need tonight is direction on what council believes is in the community's best interest, and we'll, we'll take your direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the chief? Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you. If we were to approve expanding the program for one intersection, how, how hard is it to, to move the camera from intersection to intersection? I mean, if you choose one intersection, do you have to stick with that forever, or can it be mobile?
It really, that's a good question, and I'm sorry I didn't address that because I think that was asked in the last session. That was possible in the old system because the old technology was physically a camera in the box that took the same kind of, it was literally a wet film camera. It was a spool of film that they came out, collected, took back. All you had to do was move the camera. Current systems now are much more technologically complex than that, and you can't, it's not a, it's not like a little mic on camera, you just take it out of the box and move it and put it in another box. The system is set up with the sensors and the angles to read the speed. It's radar read speed. You can't simply quickly move it from one box to the other. And most of it is monitored remotely, so the technician, unless there's a problem, the technician rarely comes out to actually touch the camera. In the old system, they had to come out every week and get the film. So, that's not really a practical option. No vendor offers that as an option.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Mr. DeMarco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, if you can go back to the presentation, the intersection analysis, I'm sorry. Yes.
This one?
Yeah. So, you've kind of said that based on the existing cameras that we have, there's no correlation between red light cameras and accidents, right? There wasn't a significant increase or decrease at those intersections after we installed red light cameras. So, if we were to focus on a few intersections, our focus should be on those that have the highest level of summonses. Is that correct in your estimation?
Well, yeah. I think for the most part, the number of violations and the number of summonses is indicative of the potential for accidents.
Correct.
I think if I can go back a couple of more, the point I was trying to make about the accident analysis was that there were clearly intersections where we saw, and again, we deal with very small numbers at our intersections in terms of accidents, but what we saw is either the numbers stayed the same or they reduced, but they didn't increase. And the concern, you know, in a lot of jurisdictions, and it's probably borne out by the evidence, when you put in an ill-chosen photo enforcement camera to a certain intersection, there may be an increase in rear-end collisions, or maybe an increase in other types of collisions. We did not have that experience in our program. And in the, in the places where we have it now, it was reduced. And again, we even looked at rear-end collisions. We did have a couple of rear-end collisions at those intersections, but what we found is it wasn't the first car approaching the yellow light that slammed on the brakes and the car behind it ran into it. What we found is someone stopped for the red light, and six cars back when someone stopped, the person behind him who was texting ran into the back of him. That's the kind of rear-end collisions we're getting at intersections, not panic stops and the person behind slams into him.
Okay. And then my other question, if you did go back to the intersection analysis, the cost associated with a patrol officer actually issuing summonses versus the cost associated with a patrol officer managing the summonses that come out of a red light camera, are they equivalent in terms of time spent? I'm just trying to get some kind of.
No. Because the technology is doing, because the technology is capturing the violation, even though it's an officer approving the ticket, if there was a camera there at Chambers Road in Eaton, it would have captured 67 violations. There's no way an officer's going to capture 67 violations every 24 hours. The camera would have caught that.
Sure.
But beyond that, there's also issues there with how, whether it's a location at which an officer can reasonably pursue someone, because the officer first has to be in a position where they can visibly observe the violation. But you can imagine that we've all had the experience of sitting in an intersection and running a, and being stopped at a red light. The light turns red for opposing traffic, and you see someone run the light. Imagine now, you're the one who's going to jump into that intersection in your car and go after them. You've got to be in a position where you can safely activate your emergency equipment, clear through the intersection, overtake the violator, and stop them. Imagine trying to do that at Camp Washington, or, you know, Pickett Road, places like that. It's very difficult for officers to do in-person enforcement because it's so dangerous to go after violators without creating a worse hazard than you're apprehending.
Yeah. I mean, just my, my general opinion is that this type of program, not only does it promote vehicle safety, it helps promote a change in behaviors, but also in terms of enforcement from a police officer or patrol officer standpoint, I think it could be done more cost-effectively and probably more safely as well. It takes that whole component of following, chasing, whatever, issuing the summons out of the equation and puts it into the red light camera, and then they're behind the scenes, if you will, managing that portion of the program. So, I think there might be some cost-efficiency plays in here as well, not necessarily an incremental cost to manage the program from a patrol officer standpoint.
Well, the, and I, that's a, that's a very good point. It's also sort of a force multiplier, because if you put in a handful of cameras at different places around the city, and, and that not only hasn't affected that intersection, but an ancillary effect at nearby intersections, that frees up officers to focus on other issues and other problems in other places. It becomes essentially your force multiplier. You know, the example I use, I often ask people, you know, who say, "We're not doing," and name the issue, and I know you all get the same emails I get, "We don't do enough at block the box at this location. We don't do enough stop sign violations at this location, red light violations, speeding at this location." You know, people have a legitimate concern because they see a lot of violations and they don't see a lot of enforcement. The point I try to make to them is, how many people do you think go through the city every day who don't violate any traffic law whatsoever? I'd imagine it's a pretty good number. Let's say, let's say 99% of the people go from, they get in their car, they drive where they're going in the city, they don't violate any law. 99% of the people are law-abiding. Our studies show about 400,000 cars a day go through the city. On a really good day, I have about 10 officers out there doing everything, from answering calls for service to enforcement to all the other things they have to do. That's about, so 1% is about 4,000 violations a day that 10 officers are trying to catch. It's just not going, you're not going to catch all the fish in the river. And that's assuming 99% compliance. Studies show it's probably more like 96 or 97%. So, now you're up in the ballpark of 10, 12,000 violations a day that 10 officers are trying to shovel sand against the tide. So, we try to do as much as we can in as many places.
I'm watching the clock here.
I know.
You've made your point, you've made your point very clearly. Let me, let me ask, Mr. DeMarco, do you have any follow-up questions to the chief? Anybody else have any questions of the chief? Mr. DeMarco's point is an interesting one because it's a take, a different take a little bit on what I was asking, which is there are efficiencies in the way of moving to a red light program, and I understand that, but there also ought to be cost savings and efficiencies in respect. So, asking for additional staffing does not sit particularly well with me. It seems to me if this is a true priority, you should reallocate existing staffing to meet this demand if it's indeed a priority. That's my own personal view. But let me turn now for council comments because I'm watching the clock, and we do have a closed session. Mr. Stomberg, you indicated a desire to make comment? Yes, I'm ready. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're looking for direction from the council, my recollection of when we initiated this program is it was a unanimous vote. I actually went into that night expecting to vote against the program. I was persuaded by your presentation that evening that I thought was actually very compelling about the safety of aspects of doing this. What resonated with me is the University and North Street location where I walked down that street with my children, my six-year-old son who's been known to make erratic movements as he fights villains in his head. You know, I'd just move them inside just because cars come down, and just as a parent, you just want your kids away from the street there. So, that resonated with me, and I thought, you know, whatever we could do in that location. I have, in fact, struggled with that vote, or my particular vote, since then. If there was very compelling safety data in other, other locations in the city, I think I would be persuaded to proceed, but in the interest of time, I'll cut to the chase. I'm just not for expanding the program at this point. I certainly appreciate it. I do. I think it's something that I appreciate. We have the option going forward, but I'm not for moving forward at this time.
Okay. Other comments? Ms. Schmidt?
I would agree with Mr. Stomberg, as I think at this time, I just don't see compelling safety reasons to expand the program.
Mr. Greenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, she's, never mind. At the very least, I'm comfortable with, with going back and adding the three intersections that we had back in the 90s. And I wish, Chief, you had the pictures from 123 in Eaton where the vehicle ran a red light, and our cameras actually caught a T-bone collision where the gentleman tried to say that it was the other person's fault, but our camera showed the three photos going through a series and demonstrated, and that was used as my recollection in court to end up prosecuting the guy. And it's that type of stuff that has been useful. So, at the very least, if we can only get three, then I would argue that we should bring back on 123 in Eaton, Fairfax Boulevard and Plantation, and then Pickett and Main Street. Those were three that were part of the original program. We've had many folks in Mosby Woods wanting to know when we were going to be doing more to control the red light running at Plantation Parkway. This would certainly do that. So, if we're, if we're, I'm throwing something out, here's a compromise. If we, if we've got two that are, were nothing, then maybe we can get the rest to go.
You're taking a more moderate position on this. Was that fair to say?
Well, I guess if I was to the right on the other position where I said, you know, I thought we.
I couldn't resist. Okay. Mr. Greenfield has offered a compromise at three intersections. So, let's, let's continue down the dice here. Mr. Meyer.
I support the chief's recommendations, and both in terms of placement and staffing.
Mr. Drummond.
First off, thank you for the presentation and refining some of the things that at least I personally had interest in. You know, I actually like Mr. Greenfield's idea that is a compromise between doing nothing and expanding it fully, and we can kind of see where we are maybe in a couple of years and go from there. So, I would support Mr. Greenfield's compromise.
Mr. DeMarco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I thought that a hybrid approach was appropriate for this at this point in time. I agree with Mr. Greenfield and Mr. Drummond as well. At a minimum, I thought that the first two should be included just because of the number of summonses over that seven-year period, and if a third could be done efficiently, you know, Main Street and Pickett as well, just because of the number of accidents. But again, I'd like to get a little bit more information on kind of the cost effectiveness. I'd like to do this with existing staff, and if that's possible, if two is possible, but three is not, then maybe we stick to two. But I'd like to get that kind of analysis done.
Let me ask that question, if I may, because we have three in favor of moving to a compromised position of three. Mr. Greenfield, you did. Mr. Greenfield, you didn't mention staffing. I had placed it squarely back on the chief's shoulders. If he thinks this is a priority, that he should do so with existing staffing. Are you comfortable with that position?
Yes, I'd like to try to see us manage this with three new cameras with existing staff.
And are the other two amenable to that? And if so, I think I can support that, and I think Mr. Meyer indicated he probably could too, didn't you?
I prefer to give the chief the resources he needs to do the job appropriately, but if it means moving forward with, at all, without staffing, you got me.
Okay, okay. Chief?
We can certainly do it with existing staffing.
Okay, that's what we needed to hear. Then the decision is resolved, and we look forward to, is that going to be, is that going to come back to us?
For free, you have existing staff.
Correct. Is that going to come back to us with any official action, or will that take official action, or would this be enough for tonight?
No, the only thing that will come back to you at some point in the near future is the new contract award for the vendor.
Got it.
But we have sufficient direction on what council wants.
So three new intersections with existing staffing. Great, thank you very much. And with that, let me move, because I'm trying to watch the clock here tonight. We have a...
Did you say move for a jerk?
No, we have a, we have a closed meeting. I move the city council convene a closed meeting under section 2.2, 3711A1, to discuss appointments. I'm not sure this is accurate, Mr. Lubkman, but to discuss appointments to boards and commissions, personnel matters, and for consultation with legal counsel, that's accurate, for legal advice. All council members in favor of this certification motion signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it passes unanimously. The council adjourns into closed session at 10:55 PM. Okay.